Thank you. We can start by having the pledge of allegiance, please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Seven o'clock, can I have a roll call, please? Patty?
Mayor Marciano.
Here.
Vice Mayor Litt.
Here.
Councilmember Marino, councilmember Woods.
Here ma'am.
Councilmember Lane.
Here.
Well, welcome crowd. Thank you for coming tonight. Are there any additions, deletions, or modifications to the agenda?
No sir.
Thank you. All right, let's start with a feel-good story. Charlotte, can you please come up and give your presentation? Thank you.
Good evening council, Charlotte Persensky for the record. And Ms. Tatum, if you could join me up here, please. We're here this evening to recognize Wendy Tatum. She is our Tennis Center Operations Manager. She's been with the city for six years managing that facility and through her leadership and management, it has grown significantly. Among numerous part-time staff members and full-time staff members, she also has 11 certified USPTA pros and under her management, our programming has grown leaps and bounds. Couple months ago, we showed you some of the adaptive programs that she started. And Wendy is the kind of person that takes it upon herself to actually lead trainings for people to learn how to deal with people with disabilities. She just did some volunteer work with Special Olympics. She was at our most recent conference, leading a class in wheelchair tennis. So, this is all over and above what she does. It's a true testament to who she is. Our Tennis Center hosts 14 ladies tennis teams, that's unheard of in our area. There are 12 men's and ladies senior teams. We have all sorts of programs if you want to get fit, or if you're a junior and you want to compete. We host many USTA tournaments, including the National Women's Clay Court Championship, and also we're a host site for the Little Moe's Invitational. Now, before I get into the next section, I'd like her staff to come up and stand behind her. And I'm doing this because when we talk about the awards that she's getting recognized, she is so humble and she is going to be the first person that tells you that it's her people that make it happen and not her. But, through her leadership in management, she is the vital spark that keeps the Tennis Center going. Now, to be nominated for the awards that she's being recognized, a certified USPTA pro had to write the recommendation. Trish Faulkner, who's a master professional, head pro at Ballin Isles, and who also, by the way, since she's in our city, was just elected to the Florida Tennis Hall of Fame at the recent conference. She's the one who submitted the written recommendation, so another person from another club is recognizing Wendy. Now, just to go into a little bit of things that the nomination said. Wendy's willing to try new things. She understands the need to offer great customer service. The growth of membership, programming, and team participation has exploded under Wendy's leadership. But probably one of the nicest compliments in that written nomination was from one of the pros at the center who added, "The environment at the Tennis Center has transcended one of work and moved to more like a family." Under Wendy, the Tennis Center was just recently nominated in 2018 as Florida Member Organization of the Year, and also, in 2014, you'll probably remember, they were the national outstanding facility. So, now, we're talking about not just one, but two awards. The first one that she's already received, she was named the Facility Manager of the Year for the Florida Division. And coming up, she gets the opportunity to go to Las Vegas and be named the National Manager of the Year for the National USPTA Program. So with that, please join me in congratulating Wendy Tatum on her recognition for everything that she does. And if we could come down for a picture.
We're going to say some kind words about you. Can't wait to see how the new facility is going to make that Tennis Center even better. So Matthews, our tennis player, do you have anything you wanted to add?
It's a wonderful center and with excellent pros, and I'm really looking forward to the new center.
Great. All right, now, next on our list is a presentation from Brightline AHR Constructions. Can I please have Bob O'Malley and Jennifer Donaldson to the panel, please?
Good evening. Let me see if I can get this up. Thank you mayor and members of the council. Appreciate you giving us the time to meet with you, to give you an update on Brightline, where we've been for the past year, where we're going, and where we're headed. We met with your staff a couple of months ago and they suggested that we come to a council meeting to give you the same updates that we gave them, but also to answer any questions that you have. I should mention, this is not a one-time deal. We welcome the opportunity to come back anytime to provide you with regular updates. And in addition to that, we'll be in regular communication with your staff. And most importantly, the very final slide I have has our contact information, including my cellphone number. So that number's now public record, so feel free to pass it on. Use it not just for yourselves, but to pass it on to any constituents that might have questions as well. So, we recently celebrated our one-year anniversary. We started operations, West Palm Beach to Fort Lauderdale in January 2018, and started in Miami in May. So we've been up and running for a little over a year, and ridership is trending up and going strong, and the system's very popular. So the feedback we get from people is very positive. We track online comments and things like that, and our promoter score, our net promoter score is up there with JetBlue and Ritz-Carlton and other brands that are known for customer service. And our partnership with Virgin Trains is part of that, because we want to be in that same group of customer-oriented services. So that's going very well. And in addition to ridership going up, revenue is increasing, and repeat ridership, we track that as well. So that's going very strong as well. So, as you know, we operate West Palm Beach, Fort Lauderdale, to Miami, and in addition to the train service, we've developed around our stations, and we've seen the transit-oriented development do very well around our stations as well. So that drives ridership on the train, but ridership, the train itself makes the transit-oriented development appealing as well. So Phase Two will be to expand to Orlando. One of the comments that we hear a lot from our riders in South Florida is, "When are you going to Orlando?" We actually have people sometimes show up at the station and try to buy tickets to Orlando and wondering where it is on the reservation system. So they're excited about going up to Orlando, to be able to visit Orlando, visit the theme parks. But another benefit of our connection with Orlando for especially people in Palm Beach County is that anybody that flies out of Orlando International Airport, you now can take the train directly to the airport, you don't have to worry about parking your car. So that connectivity with the airport will be good for people in this community. And then also, the back-and-forth flow, connecting South Florida with the world's largest tourist destination, I think will be good for both regions and strengthen the economy of both regions. So we're really excited about that. We have a three-year construction period, and Jennifer will talk a little bit more about the construction process, but we anticipate starting revenue service into Orlando in mid-2022. There we go. And one other benefit of the construction, the service itself will be great for the economy, but so too will the construction. So over three years, we'll be hiring 10,000 jobs. And the great thing, too, about this is we are working with 70, over 70 different Florida companies. So we will work with major construction and engineering firms, you know, global and national firms, but also 70 smaller companies that are based here in Florida. So I think that's a great thing. And here are some of the different numbers. Won't bore you going through all of them, but I think the most important thing are the jobs, the 10,000-plus construction jobs. And then Jennifer Donaldson is here. She's part of the construction team, and she'll talk a little bit, like I said, about who they are and the process that we'll use in working with you, working with your staff, and working with the public as we go through the work over the next three years. Jennifer?
Thank you Bob. Mayor, vice mayor, councilmembers, we really appreciate your invitation to present to you tonight. I am terrible at standing behind lecterns, I'm used to moving around, so I apologize if I feel uncomfortable standing behind here. As Bob mentioned, my name is Jennifer Donaldson. I realize I don't fit into the typical mold of what you think of when you look or think of general contractors, but I did graduate with a degree in civil engineering and have been doing this for the past 19 years, all over the country and internationally, on large, heavy civil projects and transit, ranging from $60 million to $1.2 billion. And so when I was asked by my company if I wanted to be a part of this, it took me all of about five seconds to say yes, I wanted to be a part of this project. And coming here and working with the people that we've put together to construct this team, it's pretty evident that everyone on our project is excited to be a part of this and we're ready to be here. So we are part of HSR Constructors. That name may not be familiar to many of you, but it is a joint venture of Herzog, Stacium Whippeck, and Railworks. And those three companies have been in business for nearly 110 years combined, and are arguably three of the top rail and transit contractors in the country. And I don't just say that because I work for one of them, but even when I worked for competitors, you looked at these companies with a little bit of envy, and you can just tell there's something special about them. So, we put this together specifically to build this project, and we bring with us the resources, the experience, the knowledge, a little bit of that crusty construction attitude that you need, with a little bit of sophistication to build a project of this magnitude. So the project, as Bob mentioned, is from West Palm Beach to Cocoa. It is 130 miles long. During the three years, we will be rebuilding the existing track that's out there, upgrading it from the Class Four that it is now to Class Six, which only means it will be able to hold trains running at 110 miles an hour. Additionally, we will be building a second track right alongside of it. We have 18 bridges to construct and 155 crossings all in that three years. From a management standpoint, we have divided the project into a north and south, that's the Zone 4A and 4B you see on the screen there. From a construction standpoint, and to construct this project in the time we were given, we have divided the project into three headings. So starting at the south, we will start in West Palm Beach. The next heading, Heading Two, will start at the Martin County and St. Lucie County lines. And the third heading will start at the Southern Brouard County line. All three headings starting at the south and moving north concurrently for the duration of the project. In the very south end, the first 12 miles, including Palm Beach Gardens, we have what we call the test track. We have to finish that first 12 miles a little bit early, within 16 months, to allow Virgin Trains to essentially stretch their legs, get the trains running up to speed, and make sure all the systems and signals and communications are working and ready for full revenue service. Generally, the construction will be very linear, obviously it's a rail project, but there are certain spot sections, such as bridges, walls, and crossings, that will fall generally in sequence with the rest of the work, but not quite as much. So we have already started counting and relocating all the gopher tortoises along the right-of-way, so they will be safe. The next step will be clearing and grubbing, getting the major trees and the ground clear, essentially for us to come through. Then we'll start fiber optic relocations. There is a duct bank that runs the entire length of the project, that carries AT&amp;T, Sprint, Verizon, all your, everything that keeps us going in the modern world. So we will relocate them out of the way, then we'll start our earthwork, trackwork, et cetera, until we're done. Mixed in there, again, we will start bridges and walls. They will fall somewhere along that same path, either ahead or behind, depending on where they fit in with the schedule. And then the crossings, which are what most people have questions about, will be interspersed within there. When it comes to the crossings here in Palm Beach Gardens, there are six crossings, and potentially Richard on the very south end. The crossings highlighted in bold are city streets, the other three are obviously within your city limits. And when we get to a crossing, there is some work that we will do beforehand. We will do it from the right-of-way without any impact of traffic. There will be some restrictions to traffic, but lane drops here and there just to get some of that preliminary work out of the way. But when we do get to building the actual track, it will require a closure for several reasons. Primarily, it's safety for our workers and the general public. It's never a good thing to have angry traffic when they see construction driving through the work zone. So as much as we can, we like to keep those two separate. It also allows us to give a wider work zone to our crews when they're working out there, because there is a lot going on and we want to keep them safe. The second point is quality. And when you construct rail, when you put, if you put a break in the rail, you actually have to connect it, and that takes a weld, and that will typically be a weak point in the rail. So as much as possible, all entities, cities, the rail owners, like to have those points of weakness or that weld outside of the roadway. So that is another reason we like to close the road in the entirety, so we don't have to put a break in the middle of the road. If that does break, it obviously means another road closure to go back and fix it, so we like to keep those out of the way. From the rider perspective, if we can do all of this construction at once, it just leaves a much better finished product from a smooth ride going across the rails. And from your perspective and ours, the worst thing in the world is to put everyone through this headache and agony just to have a product that you don't think is better. So, from all those standpoints, we will, excuse me, get in there and close the road, and because the schedule on the overall project is very aggressive, we are going to do our very best to get in and out of here as soon as possible for our benefit and yours, and then move on to the next city to terrorize them with what we do. From a work standpoint, what we'll do, obviously we'll be in close coordination with your city staff long before we get out there to close the roads. We have work plans to do. We will get our traffic control and detour routes set up. We will be working with them for the messages and dates and trying to coordinate as best with you to work around any major events. You all have, but also that works within our schedule. And we have planned the job, so we have that wiggle room in our schedule to coordinate those with the cities. So, as soon as we close the road, we'll get traffic control set up, we'll start with the demolition, we'll get our excavation done and subgrade prep, and that just makes sure the ground is ready to take the load of the trains and the traffic. We'll come through and construct the track, then we'll start putting everything back together. And it sounds like it doesn't take a long time, but it takes time, and with some of the crossings you have, they are pretty wide and complicated. In parallel, we also have a lot of systems work to do, so all the gates and the cantilevers that you see have to stay in operation until we close the road and can move them. So, as we are doing all the civil work and the track work, our systems group will be out there taking down the existing infrastructure, moving the gates and bells and whistles, and getting those functional again before we can open the road. So all of that will be happening, and we will, again, try to work efficiently. We don't want to rush, because that, again, causes quality and safety issues, but it's in our best interest, again, to work efficiently and get out of there as soon as we can.
And one thing to add to that, on the crossings, as much as possible, not just here in Palm Beach Gardens, but throughout the entire job, we try to avoid closing adjacent crossings, and for the most part, we're able to do that. So you have detours nearby, and we have the flexibility to do that. And as Jennifer mentioned, as we move forward with your staff, if there are major events, we want to make sure we're not closing crossings during those events, so we'll coordinate with you on that as well. As part of the work, Jennifer was talking about the signalization. So we'll be upgrading signals, upgrading the crossings, and there's some benefits that come along with that, most importantly, which for a lot of the communities that we're constructing in, is that they'll be quiet zone compatible. So you'll be able to, once that infrastructure is in place, you'll be able to apply for a quiet zone. And I know we've had meetings and talked with the Metropolitan Transit, the NPO here in Palm Beach County, the Palm Beach County, I think they're called the PTO or PTA.
PTA, yeah.
Yes. So every county calls them something different, but basically, they're the NPO for the county. So we'll work with them. The quiet zone itself, we can't give you a quiet zone, because it's not ours to give, that's a designation that the Federal Railroad Administration makes. But the infrastructure that we're putting in will get you there, so I think that's an added benefit. In addition, like all railroads around the country, we're putting in positive train controls, so that'll improve the safety along the entire corridor, and other safety enhancements to the crossings. Part of what we're doing, and another part important, from a safety standpoint, public awareness standpoint, in addition to working with your staff and on public notification with the crossing closures, because we want to let people know when the crossings will be closed, where their detours will be, when we actually begin operating both, not just the start of revenue service, but also the, begin operating limited service during the test track phase, we're going to get out there way ahead of time to let the public know that there'll be new trains coming through, they'll be faster than the trains, the freight trains that they're used to seeing. So we're going to get out in front and work with first responders, work with the media, and work, use other variable message signs and other things to get the word out to the public. So that's both from a safety standpoint when we begin operation, but we'll use a lot of these same outreach techniques when we do close crossings as well. So when we close crossings, we'll use those same variable message signs, you know, two weeks in advance, so that people that drive that route on a regular basis will see the sign that, you know, "This crossing will be closed on X date," and know that it's coming. And then community engagement has been very important to us in Phase One, in our current southern segment that's been under operation for the past year, and this will be a huge part of what we're doing, both during the construction phase, pre-operation, and then also operation. So we want to be engaged with the community. As I mentioned, this isn't a one-shot deal, you know, we'd welcome the opportunity to come meet with you, future meetings, and then if there are constituent groups, community groups that you think that we should be meeting with, please let us know. We'd welcome the opportunity to get in front of, you know, two people or 200 people, you know, anytime. So, these are some of the other things that we'll be doing, just to get the word out, again, both during construction and once we begin operations. And we're excited about getting to Orlando. We think it's going to be a great thing for the state of Florida, and we look forward to working with you. And as promised, there's our contact information, and please don't hesitate to call me anytime that you have questions, or please don't hesitate to pass on the number either, if you have constituents that have questions. So mayor, members, thank you again for the time.
Thank you. Before you go, does anyone have any questions, Rochelle?
I do. Thanks, I have a couple, actually. How many more trains a day are we talking about up here?
So we operate, currently in the southern segment, we operate 16 round trips a day. We haven't decided the exact operations for Orlando, but my expectation would be a similar level of service, so 16 round trips, that would be 32 trains a day.
Okay. Next question. What is the typical road closure period of time? You know, I know it's probably not all at once, but...
So the typical road closure, they will vary depending on the size of the intersection and the complexity of what we have to do in the intersection. Yours are fairly large in Palm Beach Gardens, they carry a lot of traffic, and it will be up to 10 days. Kyoto Gardens, as we get closer in planning, we'll look at that closer and get it down as far as we can. Kyoto Gardens will have two closures, up to 10 days each. I realize that sounds like a lot, but in the middle of the intersection, we are also, it's in the middle of a curve and we're shifting the track, so there's a lot of complicated other work that has to be involved in that one.
Last thing. As you've gone along the track to survey it for fixing the old track and replacing it with new, I'm sure you've noticed in Palm Beach Gardens, there are quite a few piles of old railroad ties and rail trash that littered the route. Can we count on you to take that with you when you go?
I'll answer that. So that belongs to our friends at the Florida East Coast Railway, but I'll definitely reach out to them, vice mayor, and talk to them about that.
I would appreciate it. It is a nice store, and we get comments on it all the time.
Understood, understood.
Matthew, do you have any questions or comments?
We had heard that you all might be considering placing a Virgin station here in the gardens. Can you speak to that?
You know, I can't. What I would say is that, what I can officially say is that we're learning from our riders, and as a private company, we're able to pivot and meet the needs of the market, and we're seeing demand, you know, Treasure Coast is an example. We didn't initially plan a stop in the Treasure Coast, but we track zip codes of our riders, and we're seeing a lot of riders coming out of Stewart in particular. And so, there's clearly a demand for that. So now we're looking at a station somewhere in the Treasure Coast area. And then as for others, whether they're stations or stops, you know, we're open to opportunities that meet the market demand, especially, you know, with our connection to the cruise industry, especially out of Port Miami, I think there's a lot of opportunities to do some neat things with communities. And we're always open to meeting with local cities, local counties, or even private entities to explore new ways to increase ridership, recognizing, you've got to balance, you know, increased ridership with the actual service level itself, so we can't be stopping at every single community, because then that impacts service. So there's a nexus somewhere between those two. But we're always open to having the conversations.
I think Rochelle touched on it a little bit, so I want to clarify that the road closure of going over the intersections, for example, Kyoto Gardens, you're saying it's going to be closed for 10 days?
Up to 10 days, yes.
Okay, because the community's concern is the hundreds and hundreds and thousands of lives that our police and fire respond to a year is going to be delayed, and somebody can lose a life by having to go around your construction. What's the ability of you working at nighttime?
So, what we will do is, again, work with your city staff very closely, and we have a lot of flexibility. Some cities do not want us working at night, and they would like to keep the noise during the day, and we will respect that and extend the duration of the closure to meet those needs. Some cities would like us to get in and out as fast as possible, and if that is the desire, we can work around the clock and try and accelerate that and get those closures short as much as possible.
And during this time, you're only going to have one intersection closed, not conjunctive or...
We will not have adjacent roads closed at the same time. So, if we have one closed, the roads on either side will be open to allow that detour traffic to pass. We may have two closed in the city at the same time, but we try not to have adjacent streets closed at the same time. And if that is a major issue to you as well, we can talk about that. And like I said, we have some flexibility in our schedule to work with you and make sure we minimize those impacts as much as possible.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
And Commissioner, if I could add, you know, we'll work with your staff, work with first responders on the maintenance of traffic plan, too, so we're going to seek their input before we do that, so that they have input in it, but also that they're aware and are aware of the detour routes while we're closing.
Well, some of our intersections may be better if construction was at night to get through it, and then as you go, say, you know, Bahalayan Lighthouse, where you're in the residential area, that may be better to... So I understand there's a lot of moving parts, but if you have the flexibility to work with the community, we'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks. Last comment. I echo everybody's concerns. You know, living in the north end, north of West Palm Beach, it's always been, okay, great, there's a train going through, but what's in it for the north end of the county? And as we move north, recognizing that the Treasure Coast Station is probably going to be in the works with our growing city and the location of how the tracks run through and how we have a proposed plan for a Tri-Rail Station along PGA and alternate A1A, because of what's going to grow around that, potentially what's going to grow around that area, we'd like to make sure that you consider, as we go forward, an option for Palm Beach Gardens, because I think there may be a need for that, if truly this city grows the way some people think it may.
Understood.
All right. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Senator Bobby Powell, can you please come to the podium? One of my favorite senators.
Hey, fun to work with.
How's the baby, first off?
Outstanding.
Wonderful.
Nine months old, and she is knocking everything on the floor.
And before I let you begin, if I don't, I just wanted to make a comment, and I forgot to make it earlier. Councilmember Maria Marino is unfortunately not able to be here today. She had a, her mother was ill when she traveled up north to New York, so she's staying with her for an extra few days. So wave to Maria, she's watching online, so thanks.
Well, thank you mayor, it's wonderful to be here before you and the rest of the council members today. I'm glad to be able to bring you a view from Tallahassee. Our 2019... Our 2019 legislative update. Of course, I am the Honorable Senator Bobby Powell Jr., AICP, means I am certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners, and I work as a planner during my day life. Looks like something's going on with the TV. Is this okay?
Technical issue here. Let me just real quick. Yeah, check it out real quick. Got the two overscreens here. Okay, just had some American back. All right, it's back. Let me kick this back on for you, sir.
Thank you very kindly. I do my best to make this brief, and we'll run through it. Of course, my name is Bobby Powell Jr. I am one of the senators. There are 40 senators in the state of Florida, which I have the opportunity and the privilege of being one to represent Palm Beach County. In that, in Palm Beach County, I'm a part of the Palm Beach County Legislative Delegation. I've been a chairman of the entire delegation, and currently, as the, one of the senior members of the Senate, I still have the opportunity to kind of serve as de facto chairperson to help move some of the legislation for the entirety of Palm Beach County through the process. There are 13 members of our delegation. I am one of four senators, and we have nine state representatives. The representative who represents this area, Representative Rick Roth, he and I have a good working relationship, and we have the opportunity to work on several pieces of legislation as we've moved it through the process. As you know, in the Senate, we have unlimited bill slots, so if you have anything that you'd like for me to file, I will take you up on that, and I can file that legislation for you. But we will still need to make sure that we find a House sponsor, because our House members only have six pieces of legislation that they can sponsor. I remember being in the House several years ago, back when I was young, but I'm glad to be in the Senate now. My committee assignments. It's very important to point out that I sit on the very important and very powerful Appropriations Committee. That's the full Appropriations Committee. Everything that has to happen in terms of the budget goes through that committee. This year, we passed a $91.8 billion budget before the governor got to it, and I sit on the Appropriations Committee in the Senate. Also, I'm the vice chair on the Subcommittee on Agriculture, Environment, and General Government. That's where a lot of the water projects go through, and that's where we're instrumental in getting money in the budget for Palm Beach Gardens. We'll talk about that a little bit later. I also sit on Finance and Tax, Ethics and Elections, and I'm the alternating chair on the Joint Committee on Public, of Public Counsel and Oversight. This year, a few pieces of legislation that I pushed amongst many, I had, I think we carried, Nasby could tell me, I think we carried 18 bills this year, which is very similar to what we did last year. But some of the bills that were important that we put our, we kind of stepped into and sunk our teeth into were Senate Bill 462, which deals with less pendants. That bill provides clarifying language to preserve the intent of the less pendants statute to prevent intervening liens on property until a final judicial cell is complete, including the transfer of title. In the midst of it, that bill actually became a bill called Judicial Process of Servers, because we had clarifying language added to the piece of legislation from the Process Servers to clear up some of the issues that Process Servers were having here in the state of Florida, including a former legislative aide of mine being able to call me and add another piece to the Process Server bill with regard to tents on windows. So it's good when you can see people who are everyday people intervene and work on the process. We had the opportunity to work on a bill which dealt with repealing mandatory direct file. Mandatory direct file would have eliminated direct file, a practice which ultimately and automatically tried the juvenile between the ages of 14 and 17 into the adult court system. So we worked diligently to move that, and we eventually got that bill to be a part of the entire criminal justice package that was passed this year. Senate Bill 838, Public Records/Mental Health Treatment and Services. That's a public records bill that deals with the mental health bill that we all, it was a companion to Senate Bill 1418, the Mental Health DCF Task Force Recommendations Bill that we push giving mental health recipients instead of one to submit their paperwork on involuntary examinations to DCF, which would allow DCF to collect more data on what's happening with these children, as well as encouraging schools to use standardized suicide screening instruments through the Voluntary Suicide Prevention Certified Schools Program. And amongst other things, taking other recommendations from the DCF Task Force, implementing them with that legislation. What you should know here in the state of Florida is that mental health is one of the crises that we deal with. We are 49th in the nation when it comes to dealing with mental health issues, and every year I've dealt with mental health issues for people who were in my family personally, so I take it as a task that I will try to tackle and go after every year. I was fortunate to work with another Palm Beach County legislator, Representative Silvers, on passing the DCF Task Force Recommendations Bill. And then the Census Complete Count Committee. If you've been paying attention to the news recently, you know that there's been a lot of talk about the census. The census will begin April 1st, 2020. That's when the count will begin. I have recommended to the governor and my legislative colleagues that we have a Census Complete Count Committee. This committee would create a statewide census complete count made up of state, local, and community leaders that will come in and work on implementing and best strategies, best practices to assist with the administration of the census and the outreach strategy related to the 2020 decennial census. So many things are depend, excuse me, are dependent on that 2020 census. Amongst those are the amount of funding that we get back from the federal government. So we're pushing that, we've continued to push it. I've had conversations with the governor's legislative staff, as well as the Senate President. I haven't had the opportunity to talk to the Speaker of the House, but this is something that I think is important. Regardless of whether a question is or is not a part of the census, we need to make sure that everyone is counted. Other than my issues that I fought for specifically, we'll discuss some of the major session issues this year. House Bill 7123, that dealt with the sales tax holiday and the charter school tax referendum. That's what we call this year, the tax package. It created a back-to-school sales tax holiday, which now happens from August 2nd to August 6th. And then we also had the disaster prepared in this holiday that actually already passed from May 31st through June 6th. This bill also lowers the commercial property rent tax from 5.7% to 5.5%. That was a recommendation by many of our realtors. And it also requires revenues from school districts voted discretionary millage to be shared with charter schools based on each charter school's proportionate share of the district's student enrollment. This change applies to referendums that happened after July 1st, 2019. So you know that here in Palm Beach County, we had language in our amendment that we passed that said non-chartered public schools would be eligible for that additional funding, so it will not affect us this time. However, if we go back and try to re-up that when it, when it extinks, when it, when it's over, then we'll have to include that unless legislation changes prior to that. Senate Bill 7125, the criminal justice package. That bill, it puts together parts of the First Step Act from the federal government, includes that in the state of Florida. One of the things that it does is it raises the grand theft and retail threshold from $300 to $750. What we've seen here in the state of Florida is that sometimes young people or kids were being charged with felonies for taking something such as a cellphone. And we know cellphones now, they may be small devices, but when this was originally, this bill or this language was originally put in place, everyone wasn't carrying a $1,000 pocket-sized cellphone or $600 cellphone. So it raises that threshold. It removes the mandatory revocation slash suspension of driver's license for certain crimes. One of the things we know that happens is that if someone does not pay child support, sometimes they'll have their license revoked. Well, if you don't have your license, then how do you expect to go to work and be able to pay child support? We require each clerk of court to establish a driver's license reinstatement day program. It also repeals direct file of children to adult court. That was a piece of language that I worked on to go to Senator Brandis, once we knew that the language that we passed through two committees wasn't going to move any further. I was able to go to the person who was moving this criminal justice package and have that added to the language. Senate Bill 7066, one of the biggest things that you've heard has been the Election Administration and Amendment Four implementation language. As you know, Amendment Four is the language regarding or related to restoration of rights for ex-felons. Well, this bill puts in place that people who are felons or ex-felons, in order to have their rights restored, they have to do what they call completion of sentence, meaning that if they have to pay restitution, court costs, or fines in order to complete the sentences, then this implementing language has been put there for that. What it also does is, it's been a big bill which includes a little bit more than that. That's been a controversial issue. That was the one thing that many people heard about. But it also excludes people who committed a felony, sexual offense, or murder from ever having their rights automatically restored. It also increases the distance for, the distance from when you go to the polls on Election Day where someone can campaign, from 100 feet to 150 feet. And it also had a few other pieces of information or language in there related to the election administration that we clarified, and we did that through the Ethics and Elections Committee. Senate Bill 7070, this bill creates another voucher program for the state. This is the first time that we know we had this Family Empowerment Scholarship Program where you could have a tax credit from a business be used to serve low-income students in terms of being able to get a voucher. This time, it puts money directly into the General Revenue Fund and allows for the Florida Education and Finance Program to send children to private schools. As you know, we've increased the number of students who can utilize this because we've also added the bully provision last year. It diverts school funds collected for the Hope Scholarship, an estimated $7 million to fund the existing Florida Tax Credit Scholarship Program. And the Hope Scholarship Funds are now collected during the registration of a motor vehicle program. And also, while the bill revises the best and brightest teacher and principal program by removing the ACT and SAT requirements, the incentives remain a bonus and not a permanent salary increase for teachers and instructional personnel and principals here in the state of Florida. So those were some of the more heavy and heavily discussed and major issues that were overall for the state of Florida this year in session. One of the issues that's probably important to Palm Beach Gardens and municipality as a whole has been the Senate Bill 82, which deals with vegetable gardens. I will tell you, as you know, one of the things that I'm known for is kind of fighting for home rule, and the League of Cities has recognized that, many of our municipalities has recognized it as well. This year, this bill, the vegetable gardens bill, passed in the legislature. It moved pretty quickly through all of the committees until it got to the floor, and I saw it, and I was like, wait a minute, there's some things that need to be pointed out. I was able to take five senators with me out of the 40, but ultimately, people on the floor were persuaded that, by the idea that this is vegetable garden. Things of concern, the bill defines a vegetable garden as a plot of land where herbs, fruit, flower, or vegetables are cultivated for human ingestion. That could single-handedly turn any residential piece of land into an agricultural piece of land. It could also, there's no setback requirement nor height requirement. So we know that sometimes if someone is growing corn on their land that's six feet tall, it could bring things like rats and rodents and other things that may, snakes that may be on their property. Where does their property rights end and yours begin? That has been a problem. However, regardless of how high, high and hard I fought against this piece of legislation, it ultimately passed through the entire legislature. This was something that ultimately started in Miami. I forget which town it was. It was, I think, north, somewhere in North Miami Beach where someone wasn't allowed to grow vegetables in their front yard, and they were able to take it. They lost in court, they lost at the Planning and Zoning or Zoning Commission, then they went to Tallahassee, and you know how that works. Once you get to Tallahassee, you can say, forget the entire municipality thing, we'll just, Tallahassee will override everybody. So that passed this year in the legislature, and that's one of the bad examples of what happened in home with regard to home rule this year. One of the good things was they did not bring back, or they were not able to get that horrible elections bill on the floor again. So we're excited about that and glad that we moved forward without the state trying to determine which day municipalities would have their local elections. Overall budget highlights, I'll give you the quick and dirty version, or the Reader's Digest version, is $90.8 million, $90.89 billion budget. We passed it at $91 billion. The governor did his cuts. Luckily, some of the things that we fought for stayed in the budget, so I think the governor, he did some cuts, and I was impressed that he was able to keep a lot of the stuff that we fought for in Palm Beach County in there. Previous years, Governor Rick Scott had cut a lot of things that I personally had put in the budget. So although some of the things that we put in the budget were cut this year, I was excited that we kept a lot, and we'll talk about that in a few moments. Overall, education, $34.7 billion. That's an increase 3.27%, or $247 increase over the current budget per student, $7,672 per student in the overall education budget. Education's the second highest funded area in this year's budget. We're excited that we've seen those numbers uptick. We've seen environment, $3.99 billion. Included in that is $687 million for water quality programs, including things like septic to sewer, which is needed, including the Everglades reservoir, and also including treatment for blue-green algae and red tide. Healthcare, our biggest area of the budget every year, because the state of Florida continues to age, $37.67 billion was put into healthcare this year. Economic development, $15.2 billion. What was interesting, we had $200.6 million in the Affordable Housing Program, you know the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which is rated every year. We're at nearly $300 million, so the state, the government, we only rated $100 million this year. But within that $200 million that you'll see, a lot of that was shifted to North Florida, the western parts, because of Hurricane Michael. And then when we talk about Hurricane Michael, the recovery area, $1.86 billion that we had to front in the state of Florida because the government, or the federal government, was slow on the uptake. So we allocated emergency funds to that particular area because we've still got people here in the state of Florida who are living in tents. My appropriations, the things that I worked on specifically, and some of these things that I was able to work on was Representative Rick Roth. Overall, education, we got nearly a million dollars in the budget for the FAU Max Planck Scientific Fellows Program. Here for the environment and agriculture and general government, where I'm the Subcommittee Chair, or the Vice Chair with Representative, with Senator Debbie Mayfield, we were able to get $300,000 into the Palm Beach Gardens Storm Water Maintenance Repairs Program. Tourism, transportation, economic development, we got money in the budget for the Towne Lake Park, nearly $30,000 for road striping, and for the city of West Palm Beach, $150,000 towards an African-American History Museum. And I think I need to double-check that number. We may have gotten half a million for the Storm Water Maintenance Repairs. Criminal justice, Florida Alliance of Boys and Girls Club, we had $3.6 million. That's for the entirety of the state, and also here in Palm Beach Gardens, Health and Human Services. As you know, I said earlier, mental health treatment is funded at 49th in the entire nation. For Jerome Golden, we only got $100,000 in the budget. Previous years, we got nearly half a million, $500,000 in the budget, so we saw a sharp decrease there. But for the Place of Hope Child Welfare and Foster Care Program, we were able to get $250,000 in the budget. I was glad this year to be able to work with Matt Forrest, who is the lobbyist for Palm Beach Gardens and also a member of, or also works for Ballot Partners, who's very aggressive in terms of making sure we get the things that are necessary into the budget and consistently following up and telling me who I need to talk to next, or where do I need to go to make sure that our things stay in the budget. That is a quick and brief version of our view from Tallahassee, a 2019 legislative update from session. Of course, my name is Bobby Powell, Senator Powell. I can be reached at powell.bobby-web@flsenate.gov. My other staff members are also on this PowerPoint, Tomas Alcala, Marion Dozier. Our district phone number is 561-650-6880. And I want to, I would be remiss if I did not mention Nasby Chowdhury, who is a graduate of Palm Beach Gardens High School, such as myself. And he is here with us tonight. Thank you, Nasby. Wave your hand.
[applause]
And Nasby's also, like me, a graduate of the Florida State University. So we're excited to be here, and now we will entertain questions, comments, or conversation for Palm Beach Gardens and the members of this council. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. I know Rochelle has a question.
I have a, first of all, I'd like to congratulate you on the hometown hero, hometown f-...
Thank you, Nasby. Wave your hand.
(applause).
And Nasby's also, like me, a graduate of the Florida State University. So we're excited to be here, and now, we will entertain questions, comments, or conversation for Palm Beach Gardens and the members of this council. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. I know Rochelle has a question.
I have a, first of all, I'd like to congratulate you on the Hometown Hero, Hometown, Home Rule Hero Award from the League of Cities for going to bat for home rule and against preemption at the legislature this year. So congrats on that, and thank you for working with Rep. Roth to get us the $300,000 for the stormwater maintenance. When I heard you were going to be here presenting tonight, I thought it was a good time to make sure that you were aware that the city has been working with the residents of Steeplechase to help them get funding and support from FDOT for a safety and sound wall with the widening of the B-line. All the council members have agreed on multiple occasions that this is a safety issue as well as a sound issue. I was told today, though, that Senate leadership has appropriated some funds and that they are in the process of working on a plan with FDOT to increase that wall to eight feet. There's still some details, so whatever you can do to lend your support on the Senate side to make sure this happens, the residents of Steeplechase and the council will appreciate.
Well, thank you, Vice Mayor. Of course, as a planner, our number-one job is to serve the public interest, so I thank you for recognizing the leadership in terms of home rule. And what I can tell you with regard to FDOT, that's something that I'm willing to work on. We've had several meetings with FDOT with regard to other areas of our district, and I have no problem making sure that they stay on top of that. They have a work program where several million dollars are allocated every year for the work program to make sure we do things like build those walls, so, build walls for roads and sound barriers.[707.41][707.41](laughter) So we can, we can definitely, I'm all on board to work with you on that. Thank you.
Matthew?
Sure. I see that the educational funding, which is, of course, very important to the residents of Palm Beach Gardens and to me, has increased. Where do you see that trending in the legislature as we move forward?
Well, I can tell you that every year, well, every two years, when we have new leadership in terms of the Senate President and Speaker of the House, it's a feeling-out process. This year, we had three new leaders, a new governor, a new Senate President, and a new Speaker of the House. I believe that our governor is driving a lot of things in a positive direction when it comes to education, when it comes to the environment. So in the future, there's been, well, in the past, there's been a gap between when students graduate from high school and being prepared for college. I believe that in the future, that we'll be continuing to prepare our students for college in the best ways that we can and shifting more money to education. Now, what that looks like in terms of charter schools versus traditional public schools is still to be determined, but I believe that the legislature, along with the government, governor, and other leadership will be working towards making sure we properly fund our students and our teachers so that we are ranked higher in terms of education nationally, because we're not just competing with other states now, we're competing with nations of people we have not met. There are students in other countries that are working around the clock to beat us here, not only in the United States, but also in the state of Florida.
Carl?
Bobby, thanks for all the work that you're doing for the community. One of the things that passed was the AT&amp;T Tower, Verizon Towers, the little mini ones that, that they can literally put up anywhere they want. So we're already experiencing that within the community where they put one right in front of a house and next to a sidewalk in a swale, and someone reached out to me and I reached out to staff, and they moved it. But there's going to be multiple up around the city, and they're still going to continue to put them wherever they want, and I talked to Representative Roth about it, and he had mentioned a year ago after it passed that you guys have the ability to, for lack of better terms, clamp down on them if this gets out of control and readdress the, the infrastructure. We all need it, everybody wants it, but to put them anywhere they want within the community, regardless of working with staff or not, seems to be a little bit unreasonable. Are you going to be able to address that situation if it gets to be a problem for us?
Absolutely. I think one of the things that we have to do and continue to do is, as we work with AT&amp;T, I think they're moving into 5G, something that I don't know about, my phone is still on 3G. I think the way the computers were messing up earlier, they may be connected through my phone on a hotspot. But what I could do in terms of our municipalities, make sure that we work with AT&amp;T at this level to be, to ensure that wherever they're putting these towers or these, they call them small cell, small cell?
Correct.
Towers, they're putting them in places that are accurate and that are feasible.
Just so you know, they put it right in front of a house next to a sidewalk or wherever it was. We addressed it, and they moved it, which is great, but if this is going to be the trend, we'd like to be able to reach out to you so you can get it to a higher level and maybe correct it before it just becomes status quo.
Absolutely, and if you ever have any trouble with that, you can call me directly, I'll give you my cellphone number, you may have it already.
Gotcha, I know.
Or call Nasby from my office.
I got your cell.
And we will get directly to the individuals.
Right on.
Who are connected through AT&amp;T. For me, it's a guy named Ian, so I could call him and make sure that's addressed without having to go through all that red tape.
All right, appreciate it. Thank you, Bobby.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Senator. I think the biggest issue that's happening here in our city that you can help us with is what Rochelle and Matthew had worked on, and all of us had passed a resolution in regards to the privacy wall along Steeplechase and also the PJ National. It's a big issue coming forward for us and a big chunk of our community, and I think that's important that we continue to work with you and you continue to do your efforts with FDOT. That's a, that's a pressing issue.
Absolutely. What I can tell you is that whenever the community is behind it and is working on something, generally, we can get it done, especially with the local government being behind this. So I will ensure you that I will call FDOT, and we can work together to make sure that it is done responsibly. Also, I just want to thank you all who had the opportunity to come to Tallahassee this year. It does make a huge difference when you come to Tallahassee and you speak to other legislators other than those of us who represent Palm Beach County, because these appropriations requests and bills go through a bunch of different committees, and when they can put a face to a name and they understand that you came to see them, they remember that and they take it, they don't take it lightly in terms of us going back to them and saying, hey, remember, the mayor of Palm Beach Gardens, Mayor Marciano, came down here, or came up here, rather, to talk to you about this issue. And when the lobbyists, when Matt Forrest goes and sees them, they take that into account too. So I want to thank you all for your continued support, thank you for your continued hard work, and together, we will continue to make a lot of progress in Tallahassee. And anytime you have any trouble, you see things that need to be fixed, and you know it's directly related to the state, I would just tell you, reach out to my office, reach out to my staff, and also the members of the community, if they see state issues that we can handle, we can take care of that rather quickly. So I appreciate all of your support and your help as we move through the 2019 session, and we're headed towards session 2020.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you for coming. In the interest of time, let's just do a quick items of resident interests and board committees, since we have a long agenda. So Rochelle, would you like to start?
Sure. Sure. So during the month, since the last meeting, I attended all of the usual committee meetings and events, so I'm not going to go through the whole list of what we do on a daily basis, but I'm going to focus on two events that had the most meaning for me this past month. And first, I'd like to thank the city staff for the amazing job that they did getting the North County, the Gardens North County District Park ready for the ribbon-cutting ceremony last Saturday in celebration of the 60th birthday of the city of Palm Beach Gardens. They really did an amazing job getting the fields ready, the band, the food, everything was just great. And a thank you to Twisted Trunk for our special Palm Beach Gardens Summer Crush Limited Edition Brew that premiered at the, at the party, and we got to pack it, and it was a fun experience for the council. But I just wanted to say that when we moved to Palm Beach Gardens 33 years ago to raise our family, it was because of the family-friendly community that we found here. And my family enjoyed all of the recreational facilities that existed at the time when we moved here. My husband and I played tennis, we enjoyed the pool, the rec center, and my kids were part of every sports team that the city had. And being your vice mayor and getting to cut the ribbon at our new park with my kids and my grandkids watching the next chapter of that history begin was especially meaningful last month, last week. Watching the interaction of other families like mine, the intergenerational interaction, there were parents and grandparents enjoying the music and dancing with their kids, watching the participation of their, their kids on the dance floor or in the splash pad, watching the fireworks together. It made me realize once again that this is the same Palm Beach Gardens community to which we were first drawn and something we should all be immensely proud of. In the same vein of interaction between the generations in Palm Beach Gardens, yesterday, the mayor and I had the privilege of welcoming the residents and staff of La Pasada to Fire Station 65, where they presented our firefighters with two large boxes of teddy bears in honor of the firefighters' teddy bear cares program and teddy bear picnic day. They went out, the residents, with the staff members to buy these bears on their own, and when our firefighters make those most difficult calls that involve the children of our community, sometimes the small cuddly token of love can make a big difference in how the child processes the trauma of that experience. So it was important to the residents of La Pasada, it was important to the city of Palm Beach Gardens, and it was an important event for the mayor and I to attend, and I wanted to thank the residents. So lastly, to residents of all ages in our city, it's take the time to check out the website, read the Signature Magazine, and take part or support in all of the amazing programs that we have offered in our community. There really is something here for everybody, and bonus points if you reach across the ages.
I'm going to move to Carl. Carl, you got anything?
No, I'm going to pass so we can get on.
Matt?
Sure. Last week, my mother died, and we buried her about six days ago. And I want to thank the members of the council. I want to sincerely thank the members of the council for your expressions of sympathy and support. Ron, thank you so much. Maria, thank you. Rochelle, thank you very much. Mark and Carl, it meant a huge, a huge amount to me to hear from you and to receive your support. When I first ran for council, I always envisioned it to be this way, to be a family where we celebrate each other's joys, that we worry when someone is sick or in need, and that we support each other in times that, that are trying. And so I want to thank the members of this council for the way that you've treated me and on this. Briefly, some of the events that I attended last month included a going-away party for Beth Keagle at the Riviera Beach Marina, of course, the Government Affairs Committee, where our chair is sitting there, Dave Marcarian, last month. The BDB luncheon was, we had Ben Carson speak to us. At the NCNC meeting, we had the president of 1,000 Friends of Florida, Wendy Sartori Link spoke to us about all the great things she's doing as supervisor of election. And I was able to attend the latter part of the grand opening of the Gardens District Park, and of course, the park and everything about the grand opening was first-class. If Ron Ferris is doing it, it's first-class. So congratulations to the city on 60 years and the great celebration and a beautiful park.
Well, again, our condolences from all of us to you, Matthew, and your family. It was a busy month, a lot of meetings with individuals, which is kind of what we try to do, Chamber of Commerce, Economic Forum. State of the Chamber was actually quite well-done in lieu of having a search for a new chairperson, so well-done to the Chamber for that. Palm Beach Economic Development, the District Park was truly exciting, and I got to embarrass my kids by bringing them up on stage, which was actually kind of fun. And watching Alton open up, and a number of the businesses are now opening up in the Alton Town Plaza. We went to the Starbucks and the Boulé grand opening. I know the vice mayor and I were there for both of those. I think Maria was at the Boulé one, so really a nice community shaping up there, and we have a number of friends that live in Alton, and they love it. So kudos to the planners and to the city for putting Alton together. It's going to be a great spot, and Happy Independence Day to everyone. So with that, we have one card from comment from the public that is not on the agenda. So if I can call Paul Trupia to the stage, please, and name and address for the record.
My name is Paul Trupia. I reside at 165 Ben Tree Drive. I've been a resident of Palm Beach Gardens for six years, and everything about the city is pristine, except last week when I went to the post office and I saw the standard of the building there, I couldn't believe what I was looking at. So tonight, I'm here to ask for your help and ask what we could do going forward to get this building in line with the rest of the property around the city.
Well, that's, well, that was very quick and short, and thank you. We spoke, and I thank you for the email and the phone call, and another email that you sent kind of expressing your interest. We are going to discuss this a little bit later on as a council, so it's going to be a long meeting, you're welcome to stay, but this is something that I think has been brought up in the past by the city, but I think we're going to have a renewed effort by members like yourself, some of the residents that have voice interests and have sent letters as well.
I mean, obviously, you can't leave it the way it is.
No, well, we'll try our best. The Chamber of Commerce is committed to writing a letter, as has the PJ Corridor, so we have a number of different entities that are going to try to support that effort, and we'll do the best we can.
Okay.
It is not, it is not city property, as you know, but whatever we can do to try to make it better.
Okay. I appreciate that, and I think if you renew your efforts, I think that in the end, it'll come out to look the same as the rest of the city.
Don't be afraid to tell your friends and neighbors to write letters too if they're interested and willing to do so.
Okay, will do. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a city manager report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have a couple, a few items to bring to your attention here this evening. First item is, our Purchasing Department has once again earned a reaccreditation for the National Institute of Government Procurement as outstanding agency accredited. The award formally recognizes the excellence in public procurement through the establishment of certain standards that evidence, give evidence to the sound procurement practice. And I quote, "The city of Palm Beach Gardens Purchasing Department belongs to an elite group of procurement organizations. While the NIGP membership represents over 3,000 government agencies, only 151 government agencies have attained this distinction." With that, we have an award, an achievement award certificate, and a trophy crystal recognizing the work of the entire purchasing department.[1655.42][1655.42](laughter) Would you, the purchasing department, please stand up. Kumrah.[1661.26][1661.26](applause). Thank you once again, Kumrah. Also, just wanted to remind you that on June 20th, the city receives some extremely positive news. The ChamberofCommerce.org ranked Palm Beach Gardens as the number-one city on its list of Florida's top cities to live in. They ranked 2,509 cities with a population of 25,000 and over by five factors. Those factors being employment, housing, quality of life, education, and health. This accolade received quite a bit of media coverage, as you're well aware, and the Chamber of Commerce.org noted that Palm Beach Gardens is, I quote, "Is as nice as it sounds with the lush gated communities and a whopping 12 golf courses." That's us. We're thrilled to have this notoriety, and we couldn't agree more with the ChamberofCommerce.org.
And a great new tennis facility coming along, too.
With that, I will move on to, in May, this May of 2019, the South Florida law enforcement agencies, including Palm Beach Gardens, participated in a countywide emergency training program called Operation Heat Shield III. It's an intense anti-terrorism exercise that was designed to coordinate emergency response efforts in the wake of potential attacks, and involved a series of unique attack scenarios at 19 locations throughout South Florida to test the capabilities of emergency responders. I've asked Chief Shannon to make a presentation of what that training was all about and how it culminated.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I'm Vice Mayor. Council members, for the record, I'm Clint Shannon, your chief of police. As our city manager mentioned, we wanted to bring to your attention some... As our city manager mentioned, we wanted to bring to your attention some very dynamic, grant-funded, countywide critical incident training that took place in May, in which our Palm Beach Gardens Police SWAT team recently participated, along with many other municipal police departments throughout the county, in this, in this training. The training started in south into the county, was scenario-based, and worked their way up north, culminating in Palm Beach Gardens at our tactical training facility, in which there was a SWAT team competition that included a timed obstacle course and some live fire exercises. We have a video that describes the training in more detail.
Region seven goes from Martin County to Key West. It's the biggest, it's the busiest, it has the most high-profile targets between cruise ships, nuclear installations, and you throw in the fact that the President of the United States comes here, there's a lot of different scenarios that can happen, especially when you're talking about complex coordinated attacks. The goal here today, as in all the other Heat Shield exercises, we have agencies from all over the county that are going to take different scenarios and work together.
The bus, which we refer to a lot as linear assault, sometimes with the Port of Palm Beach, and the people are bussed in, it's always an opportunity for any kind of terrorist activity to actually take place on a bus.
Put your hands up and exit the bus slowly.
Our five municipal teams came in in coordination with one another and responded to bus assaults, hostage taker situations. Force 1-4 situations, and they worked together and collaboratively in their tactical operations center to negate the threat. Heat Shield exercises are extremely important, and the primary mission that we have in this region is prevention. We don't want an active shooter or a complex coordinated attack or an act of domestic terrorism to happen to any of our citizens in the Quad County area.
At the cruise terminal, they were faced with a multitude of different scenarios to face, from hostage rescue, dealing with role players that were serving as passengers throughout this evening, and just dealing with a lot of the chaos too, when you have an incident takes place at a large event.
You have to be able to operate in any environment. We do it in the daytime, so we do it at night, we do it in good weather, we do it in bad weather.
The scenario that took place here at Port of Palm Beach was dealing with the Conex boxes, where they had to do an extensive search in a very heavily populated area as far as difficult terrain to cover in order to find three suspects that had, or were on flood the scene.
To have different scenarios put on them at schools, at office buildings, at mass gatherings, places that would have mass gatherings, to test their capabilities.
He just said he's going to shoot him if he moves. We just told him he's just going to shoot him, shoot him.
It's a multi-county terrorist training exercise, and we are participating, Del Rey Beach, as one of the municipalities involved in this training. Our scenario here is a hostage rescue scenario. Couple of hostages that are holed up inside of the, what we are calling a hotel. It was taken over by a couple of radical extremists.
Cooperation between inter-agency is so critical in any kind of incident.
Right, unsecured stairwell here, hold on.
Yep, we're going to hold here.
It's so instrumental that we all get together, face to face, before something really does happen. We know each other, and communicate and work together as a team.
We're doing the three suicidal subjects who came into the stadium, wanted to blow it up during a soccer match.
Gardens has a little bit twist. We wanted to throw in an element of camaraderie between the teams, and they're actually setting up an obstacle course where the teams are going to compete against one another in various aspects of what would be found on a real-life call-out. So they're going to do simulation on shooting, and dummy drags, and overcome several obstacles, and actually compete for time. The Voight Beach Police Department has set up a scenario for the SWAT teams to deal with locating and traversing a wide-open wooded area. A little bit different from the other training locations, from the stadium to the school. This is actually a very heavily wooded field that they're going to have to traverse, locate the bad guy.
Looks like there's two bodies to the right.
Take them into custody. So tonight, over at the VA hospital, the Riviera Beach Police Department is in charge of setting up a scenario there for the SWAT teams to deal with any type of active shooter or barricaded suspects. These different teams are being exposed to that situation.
So here at Palm Beach County Fire Rescue Headquarters, we're doing our Rescue Task Force training. But in Palm Beach County, we call it PEM, which is Protective Element Medical Training. And that's where our local law enforcement officers will team up with our local paramedic firefighters and do warm zone extraction.
Both our fire rescue commanders and sheriff office commanders come together, and they communicate and run command in a unified command.
And it is a unified response, both from law enforcement and fire rescue, to work as a armed medicated team and to enter a mass casualty criminal event. We no longer have to wait till the whole scenario is clear. We can bring teams in and work in areas that we refer to as warm zones, as opposed to waiting till the whole area is cold.
Our unified command is better than we've ever had, and that's some of the stuff we're seeing in the Heat Shield III. So it's fantastic.
When something like this happens, and how we can work together, how we can communicate, and all those types of things.
With our growing society, at this point, it's extremely needed, especially with the growing threats that we have.
Now, we have to make sure our men and women that are responding out there are the most equipped and the highly trained and the most capable men and women out there.
We're ready for something that comes through our state or our county. We're down in South Florida. All these teams are ready to step in front of the issue and take other problem and keep our citizens safe.
In order for this county to be able to sustain a large operation, everybody that's in law enforcement has to understand how to work together, how to make it happen, so there's no problems when something like this happens with confusion on communication and who's going to do what.
I think the video kind of highlights the importance of the inter-agency cooperation and the training that's going on, and I think we're a leader in this county. As we mentioned, in many of the video, it was some of our SWAT team members and our teams there, it was hard to tell from the garb they're wearing, but if I could have, we have some of the team members here tonight, Major Marty Bechtel, our SWAT commander, Sergeant Randy Bunton, Agent Peter Reynolds, Officer Chris Baez, and Officer Matt Ray, if they could join me up here. As I mentioned, the exercise ended in Palm Beach Gardens with a SWAT team competition, and I'm extremely proud to announce that our team was honored as Heat Shield III SWAT team champions, and they were awarded this beautiful trophy. Please, please join me in recognizing SWAT team members that are here. We cannot be more proud of their accomplishments in this event.
in my report is, I was going to talk a little bit about the 60th birthday and the opening of the new park, but I think you all have covered that pretty well. However, Candace has prepared a little present for us to view here, and she's going to roll that right now, right?
Ready, be ready. One, two, three.
That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you. You know, the one last comment about the party, and you had said it when we were at the, at the park that night, that of all the years that you've been in the city, you've never seen so many people come to a city-type event like that, which really was remarkable. Shows how much the community really respects what we do, what you do, what the staff does to make the city special. That was really tremendous, so. All right. All right, let's move on to the real meeting, shall we? Consent agenda. Has everybody read the consent? Can I have a motion or a second to?
I'll make a motion that we prove this consent agenda is written.
All in favor?
Aye.
Tonight, we are holding quasi judicial hearings on the following cases. Ordinance 15, 2019, on first reading, Bay Hill Estates. Resolution 44, 2019, PGA Marina. Resolution 45, 2019, Florida Power and Light Company. Resolution 46, 2019, PGA Office Center. This means that the city council is required by law to base its decision on the evidence contained in the record of this proceeding, which consists of the testimony at the hearing, the materials which are in the official city file on this application, and any documents presented during this hearing. The council is also required by law to allow cross-examination of any witnesses who testify tonight. Cross-examination may occur after the staff, the applicant, and other participants have made their presentations and will be permitted in the order of the witnesses' appearance. It is necessary that anyone who testifies at the hearing remain until the conclusion of the hearing in order to be able to respond to any questions. If you plan to testify this evening or wish to offer written comments, please fill out a card and give to the clerk. The city clerk will now swear on all persons who intend to offer testimony this evening on any of these cases.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Thank you. On ordinance 12, 2019, first reading, can the clerk read the title, please?
Ordinance 12, 2019, an ordinance to the city council of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending Chapter 38 Fire Prevention and Protection of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida. At Article II, Fire Department, Division II Firefighters Pension Fund, amending Sections 38-55 contributions and 38-78 supplemental benefit, Florida statute, Chapter 175, share accounts, providing a complex clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and further purposes.
All right, I'll open the hearing. Just that presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. For the record, Alan Owens, Finance Administrator, and Ordinance 12, 2019, basically implements changes that were agreed upon during the recently concluded collective bargaining negotiations between the city and the fire union. Basically, these changes revise the methodology, the way that the premium tax revenues that are levied or assessed under Chapter 175 are allocated between the city and to the firefighter's share plan. And just to further background, this tax is levied on property insurance that's written throughout the city. It's assessed at the rate of 1.85% of the total premiums. The effective date of the changes would be October 1st of this year. And as far as exactly what is changing, the actual details of the proposed, or the adopted changes, beginning October 1st, 2019, all of the Chapter 175 premium taxes received, up to $750,072.76, which is referred to as the base amount, will be used to reduce the city's annual required contribution. And this base amount that's referred to is, was established as the amount that was collected in 2013. If the tax revenues that are received exceed this base amount, 50% of the excess will go to fund the firefighter's share accounts, and the other 50% will be used to be credited against the city's required annual contribution. An impact statement that was prepared by the plan's actuary was just recently received this week. In that statement that was prepared by the actuary, they project that the city's annual contribution will be reduced by about 2% from 54.19% to 52.05% of covered payroll. And staff recommends approval of ordinance 12. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you. I don't have any cards on this. We'll close the hearing. Can I get a motion and a second to approve?
Sure, I move that we adopt ordinance 12, 2019.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All right, let's bring her back for discussion. Go ahead, Matt.
We have a first-class fire department here. I think this makes sure that, that we maintain that department, and I congratulate Ron on successfully negotiating an agreement that ensures that our fire department is second to none, which is, of course, the most important thing to us.
Carl, do you have any comments, questions?
No.
Rochelle? Well, I think it's great, and serving on the committee, the Budget Committee in the past, it's nice to know that our budget and our, the funding of the police and fire pensions are pretty much fully funded at 80-plus percent on each, which was the ultimate goal, and thank you for making sure that that happens. All right, well, hearing no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, all vote passes. Thank you, Alan. Okay. Ordinance 13, 2019, second reading and adoption. Can I have the clerk read the court?
Ordinance 13, 2019, an ordinance to the city council of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, providing approval for an admiring property tax exemption to carry a corporation over a 10-year period from the city, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Thank you. We'll open the hearing. Has anything changed since first reading, Natalie?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, or good evening, Mr. Mayor. There have been no changes since first reading. Staff is recommending approval of the ordinance.
Does anybody want a presentation on this? No, thank you. All right, I don't have any cards on this either, so let's close the hearing. Can I get a motion and a second?
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to pass Ordinance 13, 2019, on second reading.
Carl will second. All in, no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes 4-0, thank you. Ordinance 14, 2019, first reading. Patty, please.
Ordinance 14, 2019, an ordinance to the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, adopting a large-scale amendment to its comprehensive plan, future land use map, in accordance with the mandate set forth in Chapter 163 Florida statutes, specifically Section 163.3184 at Secuentes Florida statutes, pursuant to application number CPMA-19-02-000028, in order to change the land use designation on 977.81 acres, more or less, from Palm Beach County Rural Residential, 1 unit per 2.5 acres, PBCRR-2-5 to Palm Beach Gardens Residential Low RL and Palm Beach Gardens Conservation CONS, following annexation. The subject property located on the southwest corner of the intersection of North Lake Boulevard and Bay Hill Drive approximately 0.5 miles east of Coconut Boulevard, providing for compliance with all requirements of Chapter 163 Florida statutes, providing for transmittal to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, DEO, and other reviewing agencies, providing that the future land use map of the City of Palm Beach Gardens be amended accordingly, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and further purposes. Note to the public, there is a sign-in sheet at the front table for anyone wanting additional information from the DEO.
Thank you. We'll open the public hearing. Have a presentation, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. For the record, Martin Fitz, Planning and Zoning, have been sworn in. With the council's permission, I would like to do a combined presentation for Ordinance 14 and Ordinance 15.
Sure, thank you.
All right. These are city-initiated petitions to assign a city land use and city zoning designation to approximately 977 acres that were annexed into the city following a referendum on March 13th of last year. This is primarily an administrative process that's required by Florida statute following annexation, where the municipality has to assign designations for the land use and zoning now that we have jurisdiction over the lane. For reference, the subject property is located on the south side of North Lake Boulevard, approximately a half-mile east of Coconut Boulevard, and it's just south of Abeneer and the Ancient Tree property. And I would like to note that this, these petitions do not include rustic lakes, which is in the cutout on the northeast portion of this. That petition, even though it was, or that property was included in the annexation, but will come before the board at a later date. As I said, we're taking this from the county's Rural Residential, 1 dwelling unit per 2.5 acres land use, and a county zoning designation of Rural Residential PUD with an underlying residential estate. And we're proposing to assign a land use of Palm Beach Gardens Residential Low and a conservation for the wetland on the south end, and a corresponding zoning of planned unit development overlay with an underlying zoning designation of Residential Low RL3 and conservation for the individual pods. As part of the rezoning, we're proposing a specific setback chart for the individual pods. These are consistent with the way that these lots have already been developed. As, the majority of these sites have already been built, there are only a few left, and this will allow them to be developed consistent with what's already in the site. It has been duly noticed, and these designations are consistent with the land use and the zoning from the county and the approved uses. And this was presented before the Plannings, Zoning, and Appeals Board, and each petition was recommended approval by votes of 7-0. Staff is available if you have any questions. And staff recommends approval of both petitions.
Thank you. I don't have any cards on this, so we'll close the hearing. And to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve, we're doing 14 first, right?
Correct.
To approve Ordinance 14, 2019, our first reading.
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion?
No.
It's just a cleanup provision, as was others, so thank you. Hearing no other discussion. Can I get a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes 4-0, thank you. And Patty, can you read the title, Ordinance 15, 2019?
Ordinance 15, 2019, an ordinance to the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, rezoning certain real property, such property being comprised of 977.81 acres in size, more or less, and located on the southwest corner of the intersection of North Lake Boulevard and Bay Hill Drive, approximately 0.5 miles east of Coconut Boulevard, providing that this parcel of real property that is more particularly described herein shall be rezoned from Palm Beach County Residential Plan Unit Development, PUD, to Palm Beach Gardens Plan Unit Development, PUD, with underlying zoning designations of Palm Beach Gardens Residential Low, RL3, and Palm Beach Gardens Conservation, CONS, providing that the zoning map of the City of Palm Beach Gardens be amended accordingly, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Thank you. We'll open the hearing. Since this is quasi judicial, is there any expartes? I had one conversation with a resident, I apologize, I don't remember his name, it was at a soccer field, asking questions, and that was basically it, so. Is there a presentation? We already had it, thank you. No other cards on this. We'll close the hearing. Any discussion? Thank you. Back for a vote?
Did we motion and second? We need a motion.
We need a motion and second. No, we don't.
I'll make a motion to pass Ordinance 15, 2019, on first reading.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, 4-0. All right. Ordinance 16, 2019, on first reading. Patty, please.
Ordinance 16, 2019, an ordinance to the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving and adopting the city's mobility plan and mobility fee technical report, consistent with the provisions of Section 163.3180 at Secuentes Florida statutes, specifically subsection 5I with regard to transportation concurrency, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Thank you. We'll open the hearing. Have a staff presentation, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. My name is Natalie Crowley. I'm the Director of Planning and Zoning. I am here this evening with our city's consultant, who has been working in partnership with the city since 2016 on this very important initiative. His name is Jonathan Paul. He's with New Urban Concepts, and he will be doing a portion of the presentation, and I will be doing the second half of the presentation. Also, I would like to acknowledge the hard work that Pinder Troutman Consulting, Andrea Troutman specifically, has done. She is not here this evening, but she has done an exceptional amount of work, an exceptional work on this project. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jonathan for the beginning of the presentation.
Thank you, Natalie. Good evening, councilmembers. My name's Jonathan Paul, Principal of New Urban Concepts. We're going to be discussing tonight the first reading of the city's mobility plan and mobility fee. While this is a fairly new concept within Palm Beach County, this is actually something that's been authorized by state statute for a number of years, and a number of local governments are actually, have already implemented or adopted mobility plans and mobility fees. Within Palm Beach County, the City of West Palm Beach has adopted a mobility plan for its downtown, but not the rest of the city. Palm Beach Gardens is the first local government to move forward with a mobility plan and a mobility fee. Elsewhere in the state, the first one, in the state of Florida, which I actually worked on, in Elatra County, was adopted back in 2011. And as you see, there's a number of the green stars indicate local governments that have already adopted it. The red indicate local governments that are underway today, and as you see, the orange is starting to increase. So more and more of the local governments are starting to become interested in a mobility plan and mobility fee. And part of that is, a lot of places in Florida have realized that something what's known as induced demand. So you basically build a new roadway, and as soon as you build it, it gets congested. Then you widen it again, and it gets congested. So more and more communities are looking for further ways to essentially stop chasing capacity. So you approve development, development generates more traffic, you add roadway capacity, and kind of just keeps going on and on. What that was called, essentially the requirement that development provide infrastructure concurrent with their project, was known as transportation concurrency. And the Florida legislature has changed how local governments can implement transportation concurrency. It used to be before 2005, a local government could deny a development if there was not adequate roadway capacity. Since 2005, the legislature has changed that significantly, to the effect now where, you know, local government really doesn't have an opportunity to deny based on concurrency, but they have some additional procedures. So a lot of local governments are looking at mobility plans and mobility fees. The legislature took a break from 2013 to 2019, though some, as you may know, through House Bill 7103, they passed several updates to both the Community Planning Act related to transportation concurrency and updates to the Impact Fee Act. What many local governments in Florida find themselves in, Palm Beach Gardens is one of them, is what happens when you're no longer widening roads. You know, for a number of years, Palm Beach County and growing counties throughout Florida, roadway widening was the first solution. But as your urbanized areas continue to develop, it becomes increasingly difficult to either widen roadways, or if you actually want to widen a roadway, the impact to businesses and neighborhoods is significant. So more and more communities are looking at other ways to get around and to start planning for mobility. The big difference between a mobility plan and a mobility fee is mobility plans are focused on moving people. Whether that person drives, eventually takes a bus, bikes, walks, uses Uber or Lyft or some other mode of transportation, mobility plans account for all those. Transportation concurrency and roadway impact fees account for one way of travel, and that's cars. New technology, especially amongst the millennial generation and Generation Z coming behind it, are increasingly looking towards other modes of travel, whether it be an electric bicycle, a scooter, some other form of mobility, and more and more, call them active adults in the villages and other communities, are actually looking to use golf carts as a primary way to get around. So people are looking at additional options beyond just driving. And one of the most interesting and exciting potential coming along is what's known as an autonomous transit vehicle. These vehicles are essentially small buses or minivans, and they don't have a driver. And they run with either in traffic or on a dedicated lane. And five years ago, this was way out in the future, but now they're starting to talk about this in Miami and Tampa. They'll be running it this fall at the University of Florida between downtown and UF, and a project I work on in Gainesville will also be running them starting in the spring. So this is actually something that's moving along quickly. And in the mobility plan itself, we've actually identified a number of future routes that should Tri-Rail train service ever come into existence, or Virgin open up a station at the future Tri-Rail station. We actually have a plan to provide these type of circulators to get people, say, from the gardens, from downtown gardens, from where we're at today, over to that station. The sharing economy is increasingly taking off as well. People don't necessarily have to own a second car, or don't even want to own a car, especially true amongst the younger generation. They use Uber, they use Lyft. There's more developers that are looking to actually not provide parking, especially if they have to do structure parking, and doing a car share or a bike share program. So really, the evolution of transportation mobility is evolving quite significantly. So as part of the county or the city's mobility plan efforts, back in 2016, we started drafting changes to the comprehensive plan. Those were actually transmitted to the state and adopted, and now, we'll go into a little bit further detail. Then we worked on development of the mobility plan, and then subsequently the mobility fee. Again, the plan amendments were submitted back in 2016. They've been adopted and accepted by the state of Florida, and they basically established the framework from which we've developed the mobility plan and fee. So how do you create a plan? You have a lot of public involvement, a lot of charrettes. We involved a number of different departments within the City of Palm Beach Gardens, got a lot of good feedback from the police department, from your fire rescue folks, and planners, engineers, and really helped to identify, you know, beyond just intersection improvements of roadways, but where there are gaps in trails, sidewalks, where there are impediments to people moving about the committee, community. Part of this effort included a significant data collection, where we went out there working with city staff to map and inventory, bicycle lanes, sidewalks, a number of variables throughout the city that formed the mobility plan. That data found its way into tables, and essentially, the data and input we received resulted in actual proposed improvements. So the mobility plan covers the vast majority of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, and specifically is focused on all areas east of the Beeline Highway. Any area west of the Beeline Highway will continue to stay under the county's transportation concurrency and proportionate share system, and also pay the county and city's roadway impact fee. Anything east of Beeline Highway will fall under a mobility plan and mobility fee. And so we went through, there's a whole long appendix of every single roadway project, sidewalks, bike lanes, intersections, and provided a number of graphic examples of what that actually means. So to say, you know, what does military trail look like today? Just north of Kyoto Gardens, it's a four-foot sidewalk, a green grass strip, and a six-lane arterial. Under the mobility plan, we're essentially continuing the city's innovative park system and parkway network that's already been developed. You see portions of it along Hood Road, along PGA, along Central where you have a very wide trail. You have landscaping. It's actually an environment that people would want to walk or bicycle in. Right now, it's kind of hard to convince somebody that it's a pleasant experience to walk or bike along military trail, but if you had that same environment that you do along Central, or, you know, what they built up along Donald Ross, it actually gets people and provides them an opportunity to safely walk or bicycle. And, you know, more and more communities are finding their way also scoot. You know, scooters are becoming something that's a big endeavor, and they'll likely show up in West Palm at a certain point, and then make their way up into this community. So again, we went through a fairly exhaustive detail, looking at all the main streets within the City of Palm Beach Gardens, and identified different types of improvements for those streets. One just south of the future train station is RCA Boulevard, where we're looking to make significant multimodal improvements, and again, also enhancing the bicycle and pedestrian network. Burns Road, just to the south here, and one thing we made very careful focus to do is, we're not taking away any roadway travel lanes. You know, we're maintaining the roadway capacity that's out there, but essentially, we're looking at the width of a lot of these roadways and identifying opportunities to add other facilities. So just for an example, on Burns, just south of where we're sitting this evening, the lanes are all 12-foot wide. You can actually narrow those lanes to provide what's known as a protected bicycle lane or a cycle track, and to actually add a raised landscape median into Burns. So this actually provides a connection both to where we're at and to the future train station. All the bicycle, pedestrian, transit, and roadway improvements are mapped and spelled out in specific detail within the city's mobility plan. This is just one example of both your existing network and future connections. And so really, the green indicate where you already have a fairly significant trail today or pathway. The red and the orange lines are how we're making all the connectivity between the various uses. Likewise, I mentioned earlier, those autonomous transit vehicles, we've mapped out four different routes. Somewhere with this, in this area, is a potential for the future train station, and all four of those circulator routes all come back to this. And this is designed for those vehicles to actually run along and to capture and hit a lot of your major mixed-use destinations and places that people want to go to in the community. So in summary, the mobility plan is focused on enhancing the city's parkway system, significantly widening the existing five-foot sidewalks to 12-foot multi-use facilities, making it safer for people to walk and bicycle through enhanced crosswalks, planning for the future train station, and also, we include a significant number of roadway projects and intersection improvements within the mobility plan. So each one of those maps has an accompanying table with a projected timeframe and an estimated cost of those improvements. Within the, so we cost of those improvements within the, so we have for the bike, for the pedestrian. In addition, we have, you know, significant money, amount of money set aside for intersection improvements, whether they be turn lanes or intersection modifications. So we recognize that people are still going to drive in their interim, and you'll still need some type of roadway capacity improvements, but longer term, people will continue to look at other modes of travel. So the mobility plan itself provides a lot of detail and documentation, and is available on the city of Palm Beach Gardens website for any members of the public that would like to view it. So the basis, the mobility plan itself forms the basis for what's known as a mobility fee. A mobility fee is the next progression of an impact fee. An impact fee is something both the city and the county charge today, and it requires development to mitigate its impact to fire systems, to police, parks, recreation, and more specifically, roadways. So one thing to verify, an impact fee is not a tax. It's not something that existing residents are going to pay or existing businesses. If you're opening a new business in a new building, or you're expanding a business, or you're adding and building a new residential unit, most likely, you'll be required to pay an impact fee. But if you're an existing resident, you're not, this does not apply to you, and it would not impact you. So I just want to clarify that it's not a tax, and it's something that goes towards new development, not existing residents or businesses. So what's the difference between the system the county and the city have today and a mobility fee? Roadway impact fees primarily fund roads. Build new roads, add intersections. They're focused on, you know, proportionate share and the type of impact developments have, and they're based on what's known as a vehicle miles of travel, how many, how many miles a vehicle will travel per land use. A mobility fee is actually based on all the projects that are identified in your plan. It's allowed per statute, Florida statute, as an alternative to transportation concurrency, and it's intended to replace concurrency, proportionate share, and roadway impact fees, and it's focused on people travel as opposed to necessarily roadway travel. And it allows the city to fund trails, sidewalks, intersection improvements, transit circulators, whereas a roadway impact fee only allows for the city to fund roadway capacity projects. The fee structure itself is, goes into a detailed technical report that looks at calculating various capacities and cost of multimodal improvement, and then provides a rate per square foot. One of the big things about the proposed mobility fee is it is intended to replace Palm Beach County's roadway impact fee. So it's intended that any development that occurs within the city of Palm Beach Gardens east of the B line highway would pay a mobility fee directly to the city, and the city would control where that money's spent, where that money's programmed, so long as it's within the city limits itself. This map shows the county's existing benefit district. So what happens today, say, you have a development that comes in close to where we're at right now. They would pay a fee to the county, then the county can spend that money on roadway projects anywhere within this area. So they can spend that money in Toquesta, they can spend that money in Riviera Beach, spend that money up on Indian Town Road. There's no requirement that they actually spend that money in the gardens. This mobility fee would allow the city to spend that money within Palm Beach Gardens. And how do we control that? Through what's known as a benefit district and assessment district. The pink area here shows the areas within the city of Palm Beach Gardens that maintain this current system. They pay a county roadway impact fee, a city roadway impact fee, and they have to do proportionate share. Everything east of the B line, this whole area here, any new development, redevelopment that pays a fee, pays it to the city, and the city can spend it on the improvements identified in the mobility plan. So they can add crosswalks, they can add sidewalks, they can improve intersections, and it would be each one of you that would decide through your capital improvements process which of those projects actually gets ranked and prioritized. It wouldn't necessarily be the decision of Palm Beach County any longer. It would be a decision of the city of Palm Beach Gardens. So we've gone through and done a detailed analysis of what the current county fee is, what the current Palm Beach Gardens fee is, and then what the mobility fee is itself. So, and this is just a subset of the various fees that are out there. There's actually a number of other uses. So the mobility fee itself comes in a little bit lower than the combined county and city roadway impact fees, but it is higher than a number of just standalone county impact fees. And we'll get into a little bit further discussion of why that is in Natalie's presentation, and I'll supplement to that. But essentially, this provides just a snapshot of the comparison between the two. So the big difference is, right now, say, a 50,000-square-foot retail use comes in. $400,000 goes to Palm Beach County, $154,000 goes to Palm Beach Gardens. The county can spend that money with, whenever that district. Under the mobility fee scenario, $555,000 would come to Palm Beach Gardens, and Palm Beach Gardens would determine where that money's spent. So it is a pretty significant shift from the current system. So mobility fees would replace the county's roadway impact fee, and they would combine, so there wouldn't be a separate city roadway impact fee and city mobility fee. Anything east of the B line highway would only pay a mobility fee. Under this proposal, the, basically, the impact fees for the county would stop being collected by the city, and the city would no longer implement transportation concurrency east of the B line highway. We've received, oh, she else turns back over to Natalie, but before, Natalie, do you want to open up for questions or get into the next? We could open up the questions. That concludes my portion, or continue it over to Natalie.
Let's just continue with the presentation.
Thank you, Jonathan. Jonathan has provided a very good overview of how we started this with the comprehensive plan amendments, how we developed the plan, and how the fee was derived from the plan. I would like to take the next 10 minutes or so to address some of the concerns from a letter which we received from Palm Beach County yesterday. Staff has had not a lot of time to review and go into the details of this letter, but I would like to, in this presentation, I would like to address a lot of the misinformation that has been provided in this letter. And I'm really going to try to do it in the most simple way. So the letter is a total of three pages. It was received yesterday, as you can, as you can see from the date, from the county administrator. And what I'd like to do is just go section by section and provide a direct staff response to each section. So the first introductory paragraph, as you can see in front of your slide, refers to the Palm Beach Gardens Local Mobility Plan, termination of the existing interlocal agreement with Palm Beach County regarding traffic concurrency review. The county states, based upon our reading and understanding, these provisions attempt to repeal the county's transportation concurrency, prop fair share, and road impact fees. We object to any provision which was, which would result in the elimination of these important funding sources of the county transportation network. I would like to reiterate what Jonathan has already presented. The proposed mobility plan and the mobility fee are not being eliminated. All of the development of west of B line highway maintains the county road impact fees, proportionate share, and traffic concurrency. So Avenir is a significant development, obviously, that is west of the B line highway. So all of those road impact fees that are going to be collected, and the proportionate share payments to the county, as well as all the concurrency review, stay in place. Alton, so some refer to it as the Brigger DRI, has an existing proportionate fair share agreement with the county and other parties. Alton will too maintain the county road impact fees due to the proportionate share agreement. All other areas in the mobility fee assessment area is subject to the mobility plan and fee. So that's a really important point to mention that is not understood in the first paragraph of the county's letters. So Jonathan has pointed out this mobility fee assessment area, which is also the benefit district, which delineates that area. So again, all the area west of the B line in pink remains essentially status quo, and all of the area in blue but for Alton is subject to the mobility fee assessment area. Next paragraph. The county supports, while the county supports the efforts that supplement the provision of transportation facilities and enhance safety and mobility for all modes of transportation throughout the county, we object to the plans and ordinance as presented. While there are opportunities for discussion that may satisfy both of our interests, these provisions were not coordinated with the county, nor was the county invited to any meaningful discussions of the county's transportation needs, visions, goals, or plans. And I would really like to take a moment to address that unfounded claim. And I'm going to go back to 2016, the comprehensive plan amendments, which initiated this entire initiative. Ordinance 16, ordinance eight, 2016, was adopted in November of that, that same year. And like Jonathan said, it really established a very clear legislative intent. It included specific goals, objectives, and policies that said what we were going to do and how we were going to do it. It was required that we coordinate these comprehensive plans. I'm not going to read all these. These are verbatim from our comprehensive plan. They go into great detail of what our mobility is going to do, and it speaks specifically to the repeal of transportation concurrency. But what we did do during that comprehensive plan amendment is that we followed our coordinated review process through iPark, which is our interlocal planning and coordinated review process that we, we participate in as the city of Palm Beach Gardens. We transmitted this comprehensive plan amendment to the, to Anna Yeski, who is our point person for iPark. She then distributed the clearinghouse notice to everyone, including Palm Beach County. It was also transmitted to all of the other agencies, the state agencies, including DOT and the like. We received no comments and no objections from any agency, including Palm Beach County. The comprehensive plan amendment then went to the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council as all comprehensive plan amendments, large-scale and text amendments do. Now although this text amendment was on consent, our mayor specifically, and you can see the specific minutes that have been provided for you in front of your screen, stated that she was excited that mobility and impact fees were coming into fruition with the comprehensive plan amendments on the current city council agenda. So it was highlighted by our mayor at that time, at that meeting, that this vote was being taken, which was taken on consent. It was highlighted. I do want to make note that representatives from Palm Beach County were in attendance of that meeting, based on the records which show that the members and alternates were present. So I would like to make note that Commissioner Valache from Palm Beach County and Commissioner Bernard as the alternate were there. The vote was unanimous, and Palm Beach County commissioners voted for that comprehensive plan amendment. This is the staff agenda memo that was included in the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council packet that clearly highlighted many of the details that were in our mobility plan. So I do make note that our comprehensive plan amendment was part of our year-based initiative, but the staff memo does a really great job, did a really great job highlighting the mobility plan as part of the new additional elements that were going into our transportation element. And ultimately, DEO found the, issued the notice of intent, and the elements were incorporated into the city's plan in compliance. So above and beyond the iPark, above and beyond the coordination with Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council on the comprehensive plan amendments, the city has gone above and beyond in coordinating with Palm Beach County. We reached out to the county on October 13th, 2017. We went to the county and met with county staff, so Palm Beach Gardens staff and county staff met at Palm Beach County. We discussed the proposed improvements. We presented our table. Line by line, we went through our proposed improvements. We were specifically wanting to note and show the specific improvements that were on county roadways. This was important. We know we have to ultimately deal with permitting. We wanted to proactively coordinate with the county to be able to show them what was included in our mobility plan. In attendance at that meeting was the deputy county engineer and staff from Palm Beach County roadway. I think Mo was actually, was at that meeting. He's here this evening, along with another staff representative. On October 19th, 2017, the city hosted public workshops on mobility. We publicly noticed this workshop. There was two workshops, actually, one in the morning and one in the evening. The one in the morning was focused on the business community, the one in the evening was focused for residents. We promoted this heavily on social media, posted information on the website. We sent out an invite to, to parties who may be interested. Palm Beach County, we found records, was directly notified of this workshop, of the workshops. No attendance or participation from Palm Beach County was at either workshop, based on our sign-in sheets. October 25th, 2018, we were excited to present to the public the evolution and the findings of what we had done at our mobility plan, on our mobility plan. So we hosted yet again, two additional workshops. One in the morning for residents, one in the evening for, excuse me, one in the morning for the business community, and one in the evening for, for the residents. I think several members of the PGA Corridor Association and the chamber participated in those meetings. I know the chamber, a representative from the chamber is here today. Again, these meetings were publicly noticed, heavily promoted on social media. No attendance from the county was at either workshop. In June, on June 4th of this year, we hosted yet again, public workshops, same format, a meeting in the morning for business community, a meeting in the evening for residents. Yet again, we followed the same format. We noticed these meetings. We promoted them on social media and our website, and the workshops were even livestreamed this, this time, to be able to provide as much transparency and information to the public as possible, and no attendance or participation from Palm Beach County was at either workshop. On June 11th, we met with the, we met with the county administrator. Our city manager, our consultant team was here, along with planning staff and legal staff. That meeting specifically provided them copies of our mobility plan. We informed them of our next steps, and we provided an overview of the coordination that had been going on thus far. We had a planning and zoning and appeals public hearing that evening on June 11th. This meeting was, of course, duly noticed. County staff was informed of this meeting, but nobody from the county showed up. Participation also occurred throughout since 2016 in various formats, and I'm not going to go into a whole lot of detail, but really, Palm Beach County has been talking about mobility impact fees for a long time, since 2016, actually. And we have attended and participated several workshops. So some of these workshops have been hosted by the TPA. There's been some direct coordination and conversations between county staff and city staff on what the status is. I personally recall several conversations with George Webb when he was still at the county on what the status of our mobility plan is. So this goes, this goes quite a long back. So we actually take exception, as you can see, to the claim that we have not coordinated with the county, when, as you can see very clearly before you, that there has been extensive coordination. Next topic, the county charter. The county indicated that our objection is based on the fact that a municipality cannot unilaterally repeal these laws pursuant to the county's charter. Traffic performance standards and impact fee regulations are applicable in every city, including the city of Palm Beach Gardens. We find no reading of the law that would support otherwise. So our response is, is pretty simple. We agree that a municipality cannot unilaterally repeal a Palm Beach County ordinance, but ordinance 16, 2019, does no such thing. East of the B line highway, as I've described to you, the county will no longer collect the Palm Beach County road impact fees on the county's behalf. West of the B line highway, it is status quo. The city finds no read of the law to support the county's position that its charter is superior to state law. Section 163, 3180, Florida statutes. Moreover, the Florida legislature, through section 163, 3180, encourages local governments to develop tools and techniques, including the adoption of long-term strategies to facilitate development patterns that support multimodal solutions. development patterns that support multimodal solutions that rely primarily on non-vehicular modes of transportation to provide an adequate level of personal mobility. That's right from the statute. The county's letter continues. The county's program constructs and maintains facilities throughout its roughly less than 2,000 square mile area, which includes 39 municipalities. Residents as well as visitors rely upon the major thoroughfare road network and bus system to travel throughout the county. Therefore, the county requests, in lieu of adopting the ordinances as currently presented, to instead direct city staff to work with the county to formulate an acceptable system and supporting methodology. The county gladly welcomes the opportunity to work with the city to develop an appropriate plan that supports the transportation needs and economic viability of its communities. We agree that residents, visitors, and workers rely upon the major road network and network in the bus system to travel to the county. No dispute there. That's the whole reason why we reviewed the TPA, which is the former MPO, TPA 2040 Long Range Plan to ascertain if any, if there's any long-range road improvements. Otherwise, they would have been included. The 2040 plan did not include one single improvement east of the B line highway, and that is why they were not included in our mobility plan. However, that being said, we did include several road, bike, and pedestrian improvements on county roads within the city that will enhance the county-wide transportation network. At the June 11th meeting that we had just this year with the county administrator and her staff, the city committed to the county that any long-range improvements that would be added into the 2045 plan that the TPA staff is currently working on could be coordinated and added. We understand and we recognize that our mobility plan is a living document. As the long-range needs of the county evolve and are added, we acknowledge that coordination must occur, and we are willing to do so. However, the data that we had, the adopted 2040 plan from the TPA governing board simply had no improvement, and that is why, from a long-range perspective, those improvements were not included. However, what we did do is we looked at all the county roadways, and there are several in the city, and they are highlighted before you, and we included several millions of dollars' worth of improvements on those county roadway facilities that not only improve the facilities, but will also be, that the city will be taking on the maintenance responsibilities for those improvements, relieving the county financially from that duty. So specifically, just to highlight, for example, on this screen, RCA Boulevard, the Government Center Road that was approved most recently around the tax collector's site plan, those two roads, along with several million dollars for major roadway intersection improvements, were specifically added into the appendix G for road and intersection improvements. Beyond that, in appendix D, several improvements have been added on county roadways. Donald Ross Road, Hood Road, RCA Boulevard, North Lake Boulevard, Jog Road, Central Boulevard, Military Trail. I'm not going to read verbatim all what's before you. This is all in your packets. The point to show to you is that the city has committed to improving county roadways and maintaining these improvements, which will be a financial benefit for Palm Beach County. We then also looked at the Palm Beach County Road Improvement Program. The only single major roadway improvement that we saw was Congress Avenue, which is fully funded in terms of construction. The, I'm going to go back because I want to make sure that I want to highlight the point that Jonathan is about to address. The county specifically refers to formulating an acceptable system and supporting methodology. Our methodology is significantly different from the county's methodology, and I would like to take a couple moments for Jonathan to be able to explain that in a little bit more detail.
Essentially, the methodology used for the county or for the city's mobility fee is something that I've used in communities across Florida, whether it be Osceola County, Alachua County, Miami Beach, Sarasota County, and currently today, I'm working on St. Augustine, West Palm Beach, Tallahassee, Seaside, Walton County, Altamont Springs, and DeBery and Belushi Counties. So the methodology under a mobility plan and mobility fee, the blue highlights several of the factors included in it, this is the methodology from the county's roadway impact fee. And the county's roadway impact fee is what's known as a consumption-based fee. So all it does is say, what is the capacity of a two-lane road? What is the capacity of a four-lane road? What's the capacity of a six-lane road? What's the average cost? That forms a number. It gets attributed to new growth. That's it. Under a mobility plan and mobility fee, you actually have to develop capacities for all modes of travel. You actually have to calculate the increase in capacity. So say where you're tearing out a sidewalk and putting in a new trail, you have to actually account for that increase of capacity. Then you actually go into a number of factors to calculate both credits for existing revenue and the rate at which new development will be charged. And then further, it actually goes along to calculate the fee itself. So to state that the methodology needs to be refined, the county's been using a methodology that's focused solely on roadway widening. And the assumption is you have a lot of roadways to widen. We looked at the 2040 Long Range Transportation Plan. With the exception of Congress Avenue, there are no roadway improvements identified in the city of Palm Beach Gardens. Even on the periphery of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, there aren't roadway projects. There are no major improvements to Military or B line or PGA Boulevard or Donald Ross coming into and out of the city. So we looked at that and we said, okay, well, nothing's being identified. So one thing, and the city attorney may be able to weigh in if there's questions about it, but any fee has to have what's known as a rational nexus. So the nexus for a fee is, for a roadway impact fee, is that you have to have a need to widen roads. And if you have a need to widen roadways, you have to show any money you collect to do that benefits the person that paid it. We look in the city of Palm Beach Gardens, we look around the city of Palm Beach Gardens, we don't see roadway projects, other than, you know, we showed RCA Boulevard, we showed the Government Center Road. Those aren't major significant facilities. So really, the need for roadway is not there, which calls into question the county's ability to even charge a roadway impact fee within areas that don't have needed roadway improvements. The county itself went through a recent update of its fees, and I'm just going to give some excerpts. This is all available on the county's website. So the county recently updated its roadway impact fee, and it actually lowered the impact fee for a single-family home, which is kind of surprising because every single local government in Florida right now is looking at updating their fees, and almost every single one of them is increasing their fee, not decreasing it. So the county's consultant went through, and this is the current fee or the fee in effect of 2014 to 2019. This is a new fee that's in effect today. The county then went in and reduced that fee by 5% because they weren't sure if they were charging development more than its share. One thing you'll notice in our technical memorandum, we demonstrate we're not charging new development more than its share. We demonstrate that we're not charging development for backlogged improvements, and we demonstrate a clear need. If you look at the county's technical memorandum, none of that's included in their documentation. So I just want to show that the county adopted, so this is the consultant's report, this is what's actually in the county's ordinance, so they have a new fee. So you go to office. Consultant's report has these recommended numbers for office use. I don't know what transpired, and I can't really comment on what transpired, but all I know is the county didn't accept the new rates, it kept the old fees for office uses. Go further, and there's a whole long list, there's like 60 or 70 land uses. I'm not going to go through all of them, but you go down to retail uses. County's consultant recommended new impact fees. The county adopted those. Okay, so for whatever reason, they elected to implement the old fees. Then you go down further into their list, and so a bank. The county used the new fee, but you go to a quality restaurant and they use the old fee. High turnover restaurant, they use the old fee. Fast food restaurant, they use the old fee. Car wash, they use the new fee. Why does it matter? Well, the Florida statute's very specific. Any fee charged by a local government needs to be based on the most recent and localized data available. Those old fees were based on data likely from 2012 and 2013. The new fees are based on more recent data. The county kind of, I don't know why, they picked and choose what number they wanted. Technically, those old fees don't meet Florida statute because they're not based on the most recent localized data. Another factor comes up, why is Palm Beach County lowering roadway impact fees? Why do they lower the fees? Maybe, I don't know why, but maybe it's because the cities are subsidizing suburban sprawl. Maybe they're subsidizing strip retail and gated subdivisions in the western part of the county. Maybe the county doesn't believe in its methodology. I, as a personal consultant, and I'm not saying the consultant recommended this, the consultant for the county recommended what the new's fee should be. The county picked and chose what fees it wanted. So maybe the old fee wasn't valid on some land uses and the new fee wasn't valid? So they question our methodology. Our methodology is being recommended at 100% of calculated numbers. The county's methodology picks and chooses whatever number it wants. So I call into question, maybe they're not sure they have a valid methodology or not. Or maybe the county's realized it doesn't have a significant roadway need, and that they're losing on the rational nexus, which is one reason why they're lowering their fees. A fourth option could be, maybe the county should actually take the difficult step and develop what's known as a plan-based fee, which is what Palm Beach Gardens has done. We spent three years developing a fee. Natalie's staff, your staff, went out there with myself and Andrew Schoutman. We measured the width of sidewalks. We measured where there was gaps in the network, the width of travel lanes. We went through, and you see the plan in front of you. It's an extensive exhaustive plan of what's needed. The county's roadway impact fee and their quote "superior" methodology, what's the capacity of a two-lane road, four-lane road, six-lane road? What's the cost? That's it. So again, you know, if you want to talk about methodology, I came down to this community in 2016 at the invite of several local governments. Because there was talk from several of those developments, there was an issue that had gone on in West Palm Beach with the county charging $150,000 for a restaurant in downtown West Palm. I met with the owner of that. I met with several local governments. We started talking at the beginning of 2016 about mobility plans and mobility fees. I've attended numerous workshops. I'm working for both the city and the county. I've done presentations with George Webb, was in attendance, and we've talked about these fees going back and forth. There's been a lot of discussion on that. There's never been an outreach to either the, either city of West Palm or Palm Beach Gardens to say, let's look at a methodology to look at mobility fees. In fact, I think there was just a hearing two days ago or three days ago in the county commission. We had a divided commission. Half of them wanted to look at a fee, half of them didn't want to look at a fee. Palm Beach Gardens has specific needs. Palm Beach Gardens is a mature city. It has potential to have major infill redevelopment, has a future potential of a train station. The city's taking a proactive approach to plan for its mobility. It can't continue to wait around for the county to make a decision, which the county's been discussing since the beginning of 2016. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Natalie.
Thank you, Jonathan, for specifically addressing the methodology. So I'm going to continue with the next portion of the letter, and I will, I'll try to get through this. The county continues, "To contend that any municipality within the county or segments thereof can exist and thrive economically in isolation from its surrounding communities is misguided. At the municipal level, it is difficult to sustain a mass transit system, given the needed development density, intensity, providing for an economically viable customer base. Every community, including the gardens, depends on the county's roadway network and Palm Bus Services to provide for mobility and economic prosperity." And they refer to the census data published in 2015 that 89% of the individuals employed in the city of Palm Beach Gardens lived outside the city, and additionally, the data shows that nearly 85% of the residents were employed outside city limits. So I would like to respond to that. We are not proposing to thrive economically in isolation. That is why we are proposing to enhance county roadways and DOT roadways through multimodal improvements. The county still has the ability to make improvements on county roadways utilizing gas taxes, impact fees collected from their respective zones, and sales tax. DOT is a major player in this game. There are major roadways through the city that are funded by the state and maintained through the state. PGA Boulevard, Interstate I-95, Interstate 95, Florida Turnpike, US Highway 1 are the main ones. A lot of those roads get people in and out of employment for those who specifically live outside the city's jurisdictional limits. So DOT provides funding for all of these other major improvements. The county also, as Jonathan has mentioned, has the ability to adopt its own mobility plan and accurately adjust its impact fees to address the true cost of development for a governmental agency. When you look at the cost of infrastructure for communities out west where there is virtually no infrastructure, and you look at east, and you look at the communities that have an abundance of infrastructure, how can you apply a one-size-fits-all methodology? We have coordinated with TPA staff, DOT staff, and despite the county's claims, we have coordinated with Palm Beach County. We are not proposing to sustain a mass transit system. We are proposing transit improvements to support transit systems when they arrive to Palm Beach Gardens. We had a great update this evening from Virgin and their improvements. We hope one day that there may be a station that can be worked together into our future Tri-Rail station. We have proposed supplemental enhancements and specific improvements in our mobility plans such as transit circulators, using cost-efficient and effective autonomous transit technology to support these transit systems when they arrive. But we are not planning to operate our own transit system. We are ultimately planting, planning for, and you all have seen and embraced our vision and master plan, that we have worked so closely with the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council. And I know that staff, Kim Delaney is here this evening, and she's seeing all this, and we have worked very hard on our initiative, which is a parallel path, but it is complementary on the future Tri-Rail station, which, going back to the specific claim on the density and intensity, I would like to also show that the Tri-Rail station and the future vision for the city's area, which has included an abundance amount of public involvement and participation, and through the grant from the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council, has specifically looked at land use patterns, density, and intensity. We have designated a station location, and we have looked at conceptual land use patterns that support precisely the types of improvements that have been included in our mobility plan. The county continues. "These points clearly suggest that the major county roadway improvement projects, whether located inside or outside the city, are necessary to support the city's growth and economic prosperity. The collection and expenditure of road impact fees generated by development within the city, within the city limits, and spent within the appropriate impact fee zone support the need and purpose for a regional roadway network." So you've seen this map before, Jonathan just showed it to you. I want to emphasize that these impact fee zones are massive. If you want to just take, Zone 1, we've been talking a lot about, but if you want to just take a quick look at Zone 3, for example, even though the mobility take a quick look at Zone 3, for example, even though the mobility fees are not applicable to Avenir, you can see that the impact fees under the county's system that are collected from all of those homes and square footage that is being constructed in Avenir can be spent in Wellington. That is the county's claim, that their methodology supports the regional roadway network. When the development in Avenir collected, the road impact fees collected from Avenir's development could be spent as far as Wellington, that is the existing current system that the county has and wishes to continue to have. The county recognizes that all, not all communities' character and needs are identical, based on, among other things, the development history, undeveloped, such as undeveloped land. As such, the county would like the opportunity to work with these municipalities, including the city of Palm Beach Gardens, the TPA, and other local or regional partners, to explore options to update and/or modify the existing road impact fee system to address these changing needs. Further, the Board of County Commissioners has directed staff to conduct a workshop regarding the county transportation needs on July 23, 2019. We agree 100% that each community has their own community character needs. But as Jonathan has mentioned, the county has been discussing mobility fees for a long time now, since 2016. And yet, nothing has been done for the county to advance its position on the development of the, of the plan and the fee. And just most recently, as Jonathan mentioned, there appears to be division amongst the BOCC Commission on whether or whether or not it is even feasible to move forward, or whether or whether it is not it is feasible to coordinate with TP, TPA staff on this initiative. There is still debate, there is still concern, and Gardens, who has participated in all of these workshops, has moved on. And other cities are moving too. West Palm Beach is moving, Delray Beach is moving, Boynton Beach is moving. We have developed our own mobility plan to suit our own community needs, and we encourage Palm Beach County to develop their mobility plan and a mobility fee of their own. The county has requested a postponement of this particular ordinance. I would like to address our, our proposed next step. Tonight before you, under first reading, is Ordinance 16. This is the adoption of the mobility plan and the mobility technical report. This includes a fee schedule which does not actually, it is not being proposed to be adopted. This fee schedule is conceptual. The actual fees will be adopted by a separate ordinance. Coming before you, Ordinance 16 will be on September 5th, second reading. The ordinance to adopt the impact fee schedule formally will be at that same meeting, first reading. We will also present before the council, if this, if this ordinance is supported this evening by the council, a resolution to terminate the existing interlocal with Palm Beach County for the purposes of traffic concurrency review. Again, reiterating, traffic concurrency is maintained for everything west of Beeline. The future comprehensive plan amendments and the zoning changes that will be necessary to provide internal consistency in our documents will then follow the following year. We have received a tremendous amount of support from our community partners. The PGA Corridor Association, which has attended our workshops and provided valuable input, has provided a letter of support on our mobility plan and our mobility fee. The Planning Congress has provided a letter of support strongly commending the city on this initiative. And the county's own transportation planning agency has issued its letter of support to the city of Palm Beach Gardens on our mobility plan and fee. The Planning and Zoning and Appeals Board recommended approval with a 7-0 vote on June 11th. This meeting was publicly notified. Our entire mobility plan and our technical fee report has been posted for quite some time now, along with all of the other wonderful things that have been going on toward mobility that we have been working on with Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council. The public may find both of those reports still on our website, along with the livestreamed video that we had back in June 4th. And staff recommends approval of Ordinance 16 on first reading, consistent with the findings of fact specifically described in the ordinance. Staff, through a second motion requested by the council, recommends the city council to authorize the mayor to provide notice to Palm Beach County as required per the city's interlocal to terminate the existing traffic concurrency interlocal agreement. And that concludes our presentation for this evening, and we are happy to entertain questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have some cards, so we'll call up first. There's four cards, Mo Al Turk, followed by Patrick Rutter. Three minutes, please.
Mayor, good evening. Pat Rutter with Palm Beach County, and I can represent the position for Mo as well. Good evening and thank you for having us. Pat Rutter, Palm Beach County, Assistant County Administrator. I was going to ask, first of all, to include the letter in your record, but I think that's covered with Natalie including it in her presentation. Want to make a couple of points. Natalie covered the letter in detail.
I'm sorry, Patrick, did you address for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry, 261 Florence Drive in Jupiter. Apologize. Want to be clear about something. We are not opposed to mobility planning, mobility efforts whatsoever. We have no opposition to it, don't have any concerns about that. Our interests only start to divide as it relates to the point on the impact fees. And let me run through a few points. It was pointed out that there are a number of cities in the county, and I can think of three that come to mind in South County that are addressing mobility in different phases, and that is what pretty much prompted our board to seek the workshop which we'll be having in a week and a half. So, well aware that this is a front burner issue. It has reached our board, they're engaging, and we will begin taking just our direction from them, July 23rd. You know, as pointed out, why are we here? Why are we doing it? We have an overall road network responsibility countywide. We deal from Boca to Jupiter, and we maintain it. That's the backbone system that's out there. That is why you have an impact fee system in place. I'd point out really quickly, we're in a project right now, PGA and Military Turn Lane. It is a capacity improvement project. $3.5 million of impact fee money being spent from that zone right now. Charter, I heard it touched on, but you've got, got to be clear, the authority to maintain that countywide system is with the county. It's in the charter. You have two countywide applicable ordinances, both TPS and related to impact fees. I think I heard in the presentation that there's an acknowledgement that unilaterally they can't be ignored or avoided, but I would argue that partial ignorance or partial avoidance or partial retention doesn't constitute full. So, eliminating it in, you know, a greater portion of the city while retaining it somewhere else doesn't mean it's being retained overall. Really quickly, touch on some other points. Your comp plan, policy 2.1.116, you have the ability to do something in keeping with the mobility plan, where you would adopt a mobility fee that's applicable only to city roads. That doesn't conflict with us, we would have no issue. You also have a policy 2.1.114. I looked at the history of the engagement, that policy specifically calls for engagement with the county. We would take the position that has not been done. Two different individual meetings between the county, one in October of 17, then one, not again until June of 19. That doesn't constitute engagement, specifically something as important and as, very difficult as county impact fees. We would have thought there would have been more. All we're asking for is the opportunity to engage with your staff, to discuss the data that was used, to discuss what we have in front of us, recognize it's a sensitive issue, and we'd like that opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mo Al Turk, did you want to speak? Thank you. Nick Yuren, followed by Kim Delaney. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, Vice Mayor. Nick Yuren, 12487 Sawgrass Court, Wellington, Florida. I have the pleasure of serving as the Director of the PTA.
Excuse me, can you please be closer to the microphone?
The microphone's shorter than I am, but I'll do my best. The, I have the pleasure of serving as the Director of the PTA, as I was referred to earlier. The Transportation Planning Agency for Palm Beach County is actually a collaborative Board of 21 local elected officials. We have five county commissioners, 15 municipal elected officials, one Port Commissioner. Your Councilmember Moreno is your representative on the TPA Governing Board, and our mission is to collaboratively plan, prioritize, and fund transportation. Our agency's vision is to establish a safe, efficient, and connected multimodal transportation system, and I would argue that the city's mobility plan seeks to do just that. Want to make just a couple of brief points. First, our agency in the past several years has adopted what we call a complete streets policy, which means that we want to build the kind of projects that are identified in the city's mobility plan. We've also adopted what we call a Vision Zero Commitment, which means we are committed to taking aggressive steps to eliminating all traffic-related fatalities and serious injuries, again, by funding the kinds of projects that are identified in the city's mobility plan. And then third, I want to mention that great cities, such as Palm Beach Gardens, are cities that strive to be inclusive, that provide comfortable space, inviting space, for people of all ages, abilities, and modes of transportation. And I think that the projects that are being identified in the city's mobility plan seek to establish an even greater connection between the residents, the employees, and the visitors to your great city. I want to mention briefly that the city's plan, from our perspective, is comprehensive. There are 66 projects identified in the city's mobility plan. Those projects make changes to city roads, to county roads, and to state roads. It is a comprehensive look at the transportation system that is necessary for your portion of our region. And I also want to, I really want to close by saying this. The city's mobility plan is full of the kinds of projects that the TPA is currently funding. We have a discretionary pot of federal transportation funds available to do projects in Palm Beach County. We opened the doors five years ago to our member communities and said, tell us what kind of projects you want us to build with these dollars. You can ask for road capacity projects, or you can ask for multimodal projects. The overwhelming use of those dollars is multimodal projects, very much like the city's mobility plan. So, in the absence of a countywide mobility plan and fee system, I think you're on the right track, and we applaud you for your efforts this evening. And thank you for your service.
Kim Delaney, name and address for the record, please.
Hello, Kim Delaney, 4306 Southeast Scotland K Way, Stewart, Florida, here on behalf of the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council. So Natalie referenced a few times some of the work the council's been happy to participate with in the city, particularly the stationary master plan that was recently completed for the city. So the council just wanted to emphasize, the mobility plan the city has, has developed is a direct implementation of that planning, of that planning work that took place, that was adopted by the city a couple of months ago. It's really exactly the type of work that's necessary to enable the multimodal network to be established in the city that will support the recommendations of that plan. So that was one point that the council wanted to make on the record. We'll ultimately be reviewing the amendments as they come forward. The other, of course, there's always a need for coordination. There's been a lot of discussion about coordination tonight. Better coordination is always going to make for better outcomes. The council is happy to assist in that dialogue. In fact, because mobility plans have become such high priority, both in Palm Beach County and the other counties in the region, we're initiating a regional discussion on mobility, mobility fees and mobility plans. The Gardens is going to be the centerpiece of that conversation, as well as the other cities in Palm Beach County that are currently carrying that work forward. So the city's showing great leadership in developing the mobility plan, again, and implementing so quickly the stationary master plan, and we're happy to assist in any way that we can. Thanks.
Thank you. That's the last of the cards, so we're going to close the public hearing. Can you get a motion in a second, please, to approve?
I'll make a motion. Go ahead, you've got the motion. I'll do the second.
Carl. Rochelle, second. Let's bring back for discussion. Matthew, do you want to start?
Sure, this is certainly forward-thinking. The residents come up to me and they complain about traffic on Northlake, they complain about traffic on Military, they complain about traffic on PGA, they complain about traffic in the Gardens. And I just wondered how this is going to address those concerns of our residents.
It's a very real concern, and it's something that we have looked at, and it's why we've identified potential for a number of intersection improvements along those roadways. You know, the reality of it is, all of those corridors you mentioned, they're six-lane arterials. So, you know, the one option is to eight-lane. But the, you know, the impact to your community's residents, the impact to your community's businesses would be significant. The ability of any individual to actually navigate those roadways, if they were eight-lane facilities, would be significantly limited. One thing that can be done is intersection improvements can be made to help further alleviate traffic. Another thing that can be done is to provide the densities and intensities by a future train station to give people other modes of transportation. So while it does look forward to multimodal improvements, there are also a significant number of projects identified for intersection improvements to help address and alleviate some of that traffic. But again, it's a real, you know, it is an issue, and it's something that we have accounted for.
And I think another point in consideration of residential concerns is the fundamental shift in the collection of money in the city, and having the city to be able to spend that within the city is such an important shift in how this city council addresses and manages traffic within the city. And those specific corridors that you mentioned, Northlake Boulevard, Military Trail, those are, those are all listed in our mobility plan. You know, you, you've seen the impact fee collect, collection zone map, so, you know, this allows all the growth and all the economic prosperity that happens in Gardens, and all of those impact fees to be collected in Gardens, east of, east of the Beeline, to be spent in Gardens. That's a fundamental shift, and that benefits the residents and businesses, because it allows you, as the city council, to be able to prioritize improvements that are necessary and spend them.
Thank you. Rochelle?
Well, clearly, the current system of expanding roadways for capacity is not working at fixing the traffic sys, the traffic problems that we have. And I commend the staff for, and our consultant for the job that they did and the detail that they went into. I found it eye-opening when going through the list of projects that the county has slated, that there are not many, if any, projects where our impact fee money would actually be spent in our own city. I think a comment made by a county commissioner, a public comment at the last meeting regarding the TPA trying to shove a mobility plan down their throats is quite telling of how far the county really is from actually looking forward to solve the problems that we're dealing with, with this plan. So, again, I commend you on, on the details. We have to do something. And as far as improving traffic, sometimes if you're the leader and you give your residents an alternative and make it so that there are other options available, they will take them, and they will start to pick up on it and make the changes that we need to, to help clear our roads and make mobility better in the Gardens.
Carl.
First off, I'm glad Natalie works for the city and not the county, after all of In my mind, does not the statute give us a path to doing this? The Florida law give us a path to do this on our own anyway, so we have legal boundaries to move forward with what our community wants?
Yes. The county conveniently fails to read the, one of the very first provisions in their charter. This says, "Nothing in this home rule charter shall override or conflict with state law or the state constitution." So it begs the question, how the county's myopic reading of their own charter and their own overblown opinion of their authority could possibly trump state law? But that's basically their argument, as evidenced by the somewhat vituperative letter that we received from the county, and that was relayed to you this evening. that we received from the county, and that was relayed to you this evening.
I'm into my second term now, so I've started this about four years ago, and traffic, when you're running for an election, traffic congestion, I-95, Northlake, and all of it is a, is a continuous dance with council and constituents, because it's always the first thing people talk about. And having said that, the thing is, is this community has been wanting to do, to go forward, the citizens that live here have been wanting to resolve this problem since I was running for council, which is basically four years ago, which seems to be exactly when it got on the last council's radar. And then when I got elected, it was really, it was in discussion at that point. So this is the direction this community wants to go, and it's, you know, we're leading, we're not following, and if people want to bitch about it, then they can take us to court, but we're going to put all of this out in the sunshine, and that's why this was laid out over the last hour and a half, so it's out there for everybody to hear. But our community wants to go this direction, we're going this direction. FPNL wants to build here, Downtown at the Gardens wants to put $100 million in their place. We're going to have Tri-Rail, and we're going to have Virgin probably in the future as a stop, as this community continues to grow. And we need to be connected from the corridor to Northlake to, to everything, and that's the direction we're going. And the community's demands it. It's, it's going to be a, an election issue for these four and whoever else runs. It was for me last year again. And the statute allows us to do this. And if I can use a small example of what's gone on recently, of something as simple as trying to get a, a traffic signal on Northlake Boulevard out at Bay Hill Estates, that we can't, we can't somehow come together with the county when I think we purchased the light, it's going to be on our land, and we can't even get in agreement with the county to put in a simple light to stop traffic crashes and to break up the heavy traffic that's on Northlake Boulevard. So some things we're going to go alone, and if we get challenged on it, then we're ready for it. And it's no disrespect to the county representative here tonight, nice presentation, but in, instead of challenging what the city's doing based by the guidelines of the statute, the county needs to figure out a way to start working together with other communities, because you don't know this, but I was a police officer here for my whole adult life, and I don't know how long it took Military Trail and Northlake Boulevard to get, to grow legs and finally get a turn signal in there to make the traffic more efficient in that area, which is still not done, right? And I don't know how long it was on the books for PGA and the trail, as you, as you suggested. I'm assuming many, many years. So if we can make our community better by collecting the impact fees, then we have the ability to make state, county, local roads better, and make everything more efficient within the city, because, like I said, all these big buildings are coming in, we have the Twin Towers now, and people need to be connected. So hopefully the county won't take such a, an opposition and aggressive approach, more, you know, figure out how to work with other communities, so we all can do it together. So, great presentation, I'm a little intimidated of you now. So, that's the direction we're going, period, because that's the direction our community wants to go, and this council has been ingrained in this, and so has staff, for many years, because that's the way, that's what this community wants to do, and that's the end of it.
Thank you. All right, so I get to say the last word, which is always kind of nice. For, for, for complete transparency, and this is not quasi-judicial, but I did meet with a number of elected officials from North County, a couple of county commissioners briefly discussed this, this, this item, three local elected officials from our neighboring communities, so, and I did have a nice lunch with Nick, your end too. We talked basketball as much as we talked transportation. So when we sit up here, we're, we're talking from the resident's point of view, and we always remind ourselves, and I always remind myself, I'm a resident, I'm not an administrator, I'm not an attorney, I'm an eye doctor, and I'm a resident. And the biggest concern that people have in this city, and everywhere, is traffic, and how does it get around? The thing that has frustrated me a little bit, and I continue learning more about this, is that whenever we talk about transportation, there's never a real desire to talk more about expanding and being flexible with the modes of transportation. It's all about roads, roads, roads. This gives us an opportunity to do something a little bit different, because it's North County, we have a, an economic center that's going to be developing, most likely, in the center of our town, and, and we need to be able to make sure that there's more than one method of transportation, and this gives us the city the flexibility to do so. You know, a few months ago, I went to Ron after FPNL was talking about their application, and I said, "I don't want to be the guy that approves plans in the center of our city and not have a, a plan in place before the buildings show up, and, and then how do we handle the transportation and interconnectivity after the fact?" And no disrespect to Boca or other towns in around South Florida, around the country, I didn't want to be the person to say, "We approved all these buildings without a plan." And when they showed me those two booklets, and I read through them, I said, "Wow, they've already done all of this planning, they've already discussed it, thought about it, presented it." And I thought, "This is pretty impressive. This is kind of exactly the, the thought process that me as a resident want to know is happening, that there has been a plan, there has been a thought, long before we're approving a, a potential building here for FPNL, or Downtown at the Gardens, or whatever else is going to come along, because that portion of our city is the part of the city that's the most susceptible to gridlock." And the fact that the city and, and our planning staff has already taken the initiative to look at options was really impressive to me as a resident, and it gave me a ton of confidence to know that you, as the county, and we as the city, should be willing partners in this. There shouldn't be this animosity, "Well, we're going to do that, you're going to do that." The county is huge, and the zones that you have created are enormous. You know, we all should be looking for willing partners to say, "You know what, if you're going to take that responsibility away from us, wonderful," because that's what the city wants to do, and is capable of doing, and will do, in a really good job. And that's going to make everything in North County, not just Palm Beach Gardens, better. So that's the kind of partnership that I would like to see, I would hope to see the county can include with West Palm Beach and Delray, whatever other cities want to get engaged, because that's really the goal. At the end of the day, it doesn't matter who does what, it's making sure that whoever does it, does it to the benefit of the residents in that part of the county, and in this case, our city. So this is, in my opinion, really a nice way for us to make sure that we're planning ahead, we're preparing the groundwork for intermodal transportation opportunities for everybody that's going to be utilizing that space in the center of our city, which benefits everybody, not just Palm Beach Gardens, and ultimately, that's the goal. And as a resident, and as a voice of the residents, that's what I want to be able to tell my friends when they say, "Traffic is terrible." I say, "Yeah, you know what, it might be, but we've got a plan to make sure that it's mitigated, and that we're going to do the best we can to make sure that when people show up to our town through the train or whatever other source, they can get around without getting in their car." And that's the goal. And I think the city is going to do a great job doing it. We welcome the county to be engaged. Obviously, you should be watching what we do and making sure that the city does the right thing when it comes to the county roads and everybody else that goes around, and we will partner with that, and I certainly will, and I'll always be around. But that's the goal. And because of that, I feel very comfortable with what we're doing, and I'm excited to see it happen. So with that, does anybody else have any other discussion? Hearing none, can I get a vote? All in favor? Aye. Pass is 4-0. Thank you very much for the presentation. All right, let's move on to Resolution 44, 2019. Can the clerk read the title, please?
Resolution 44, 2019, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving an amendment to the PGA Marina Plan Unit Development, PUD Site Plan, to allow the installation of three sets of crossing arm gates. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of PGA Boulevard and the Intercoastal Waterway, as more particularly described herein, providing conditions of approval, providing an effective date for other purposes.
Thank you. We'll open the public hearing, and this is a quasi-judicial, so are there any expertises?
Yes, I spoke with Don Herring.
Rochelle? None. Carl, any expertises?
No.
Okay, well, I do have three. I talked with Ann, I talked with Don Herring, and I spoke with Marty Perry.
I spoke with Marty Perry as well.
Thank you. All right, can we have a presentation, please?
Yes, good evening. For the record, my name is Ann Booth. I am with Urban Design Kill Day Studio, 610 Clemata Street. I have been sworn in, and I'm representing the applicant tonight before you with their request. I will try and move quickly, because I understand you have still a long agenda ahead of us. The request tonight is to amend the master site plan to allow three sets of automated crossing gates, which will allow for the forklifts that travel across the intersection of the driveways to travel safely, without interacting with the cars. The Marina is located on the north side of PGA Boulevard, just to the west of the PGA Boulevard Bridge. The applicant is extremely concerned about life safety as it relates to the interaction between the forklifts, the cars, and the trucks that travel through the Marina to get to the restaurant. There have been a number of incidents where the forklifts have come into contact with either cars or trucks. They have tried using stop signs, flagmen, traffic cones, and those are not working. They recognized early on that this was going to be an issue. Although the Marina and the restaurant have occupied similar space for many years, the restaurant that is currently operating now has lunch service, which introduces a higher level of traffic during the day that has not been a, a problem in the past. Where we're proposing to locate the gates are in, identified in yellow. What will happen for those three locations is that it will allow for the forklift to travel through that intersection, to get to the racks on the north and south side of that driveway. The gates will be located approximately here, at the entrance to the restaurant, and here at the point where the parking ends on the Marina property. They are situated so that they will allow for stacking as people come up to those gates and need to stop periodically. The arms of the gates are heavy-duty, they will have lights and audible sound to give people traveling, walking, driving, notice that they will be coming down. They will be operated by the forklift driver. The average wait for a drive, a pass, sorry, I'm sorry, a vehicle will be between one and two minutes. It will be similar to entering your community as you go through a gate at the entrance of your, of your, where you live. The analogy here is that it's similar to a crossing guard for a railroad, where the forklift driver will load up the boat onto the forklift, or be going to get a boat on the forklift. They will control the gates and the down position as they travel through the intersection. As soon as they get past that intersection, then those gate arms will go up. The gate arms will default in the up position. We have a condition of approval that requires that, and the, the proposed gates, I have a little, a short video to show you, hopefully, how the gates will work. As I mentioned, they have flashing lights that will be on the arms, there is a stop sign that will come down that will also have an audible sound that will alert pedestrians and vehicles. So I'm going to go through this a little quickly. Okay. Okay, with me tonight are two representatives, representatives of Matheson Whittles Law Firm. Mr. Whittles would like to come up and put on the record some information that you might need as it relates to the applicant's authority to make these improvements to the property.
Thank you. Mayor and members of the council, my name is John Whittles, and I will be mercifully brief.
You've been sworn in, John?
John Whittles, W-H-I-T-T-L-E-S, and, and the purpose of my portion of the presentation...
You've been sworn in, yes?
I have not been. I don't intend to offer evidence, but I'm happy to be sworn in.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
My purpose is to explain how PGA Marina has the legal right to make this application, as opposed to the easement holder. The reason for that is very simple, and easement is not ownership. Florida law is clear on that. The person that, or party that conveys the easement retains the ownership of the property subject to the easement. The principle of that is very important, because the owner of this property, burdened by the easement, is still PGA Marina. And Florida law is clear for decades that PGA Marina has the right, and I would argue the obligation, to ensure that invitees on its property, the citizens of Palm Beach Gardens and their invitees, are safe. So the, the litmus test, the yardstick for all of this, is, are what we are proposing, or is what we are proposing reasonable? And with that, I'll, I'll turn it back over to Ms. Booth. Thank you.
Thank you.
To demonstrate the concerns and reiterate the liability that the applicant feels is of major concern, we have video of vehicles traveling through this intersection where we'd like to put the gates, the interaction with the vehicles. As you can see, the forklifts very often go in reverse. So, and their ability to see a vehicle that might pull right up on them, and maybe stop, maybe not, can become compromised. As you can see, if that boat had fallen on that vehicle, that would have been a serious problem. The interaction of the forklift with the boats is the primary concern and the reason for these gates. It's a momentary interruption of traffic going to and from the restaurant, but the applicant feels that this is the only recourse that they have at this point to be able to maintain the safety and minimize their liability. And I think there's just one more. Running the stop sign. The property has been posted, there are signs in two locations. We went to a Planning, Zoning, and Appeals Board meeting, where we received a recommendation of seven to zero for approval. We sent mail notices on June 26th for this meeting, and the city has also provided advertisement in the newspaper on June 26th. We are here tonight to answer any questions that you may have. Joe Miller, the Managing Principal of the Marina, Mike Vincent, the Operations Manager, Mr. Matheson, and Mr. Whittles are here, and can answer questions if you have them.
Thank you. Is there a staff presentation?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. My name is Samantha Maroney, Palm Beach Gardens Planning and Zoning, and I have been sworn in. Let me quickly pull up my presentation, and I may reiterate some of the things that Ann mentioned, but I will try to be brief. So before I begin, I do want to make you aware and make a note that you have in front of you a copy of a revised resolution, based on recent discussions with staff, the applicant, as well as the parcel owner of the River House Restaurant parcel. So I will touch on those revised conditions as part of that resolution a little bit later at the end of this presentation. So as you're aware already, the PGA Marina is located on PGA Boulevard, just west of the Intercoastal Waterway, with the restaurant in the northeast portion, and access being into that restaurant through the Marina. And again, this is a request to install three sets of crossing arm gates within the Marina site. The reason is, like Ann said, the forklift transports boats across the drive aisle and across that easement throughout the day, from the warehouse to the racks and vice versa. And so having these, these gates up allows the forklift to maneuver back and forth as necessary, without conflict with vehicles. So just an overview of the site plan to show the locations of these gates, and the next slide will show you a better aerial view, but this allows you to kind of see the, the position of these gates in relation to the warehouse and the boat racks themselves. And the placement of these gates and the location that has been chosen is intentional for two main... for two main reasons. One being that they surround the immediate location of where the forklift needs to pass from the warehouse to the boat racks, either the north or the south boat rack lot. And also, the locations of the gates completely reduce, you know, they, they don't allow for any potential vehicle stacking onto PGA Boulevard, so there's no conflict in that way. As Ann showed, these are examples of what the crossing arm gates would look like, and some of those features are LED red illuminated lights and audible tones, so there's no question when the gates are coming down and when they're closed, as well as some other features that she mentioned. They will remain in the open position unless the forklift is approaching and ready to pass through the driveway intersection. And as she mentioned, these gates are anticipated to close for one minute at a time as the forklift passes through. You saw in that video just how quickly they're able to get through when there aren't vehicles stopping them. And at any given closure, two to three vehicles would be stacked up with an anticipated four forklift passes per hour. As Ann mentioned, the site has been posted prior to the planning and zoning board on May 24th, two locations at, you know, both entrances to the PGA Marina. It was posted in the Palm Beach Post for planning and zoning as well as City Council, and mailers were sent to all property owners within 500 feet according to code. At the planning, zoning, and appeals board meeting, they recommended approval, seven to zero. And so let me get into the revisions made to the resolution that you have in front of you. So like I said, based on recent discussions, we have decided to add two conditions, which you'll see highlighted in red, and we feel that these were, you know, appropriate to be added. And so the first one, number one, you'll see, the, the basic intent of that is to provide additional safety improvements to the area such as pavement repair, pavement markings, and signage prior to the issuance of the certificate of completion for the gates. So that area will be improved in other ways as well. And the third condition, the second new one, just reiterates the fact that the gates will remain open at all times, aside from when the forklift is approaching and passing through the access easement and the driveway intersection between the three gates. Staff recommends approval of Resolution 44-2019 as presented. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. We do have some cards on this item, so three minutes, please. We have six. First, Don Herring.
Oops. I think she's driving. I think we're both driving. All right.
Good evening, Mr. Counsel, or Mr. Mayor, council members. For the record, Donaldson Herring, and I'm here tonight on behalf of both the River-
Don-
Oh, I have been sworn in.
You know you've only got three minutes, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. I, I will, I will, I will be brief. I'll be very brief. Thank you. I'm here tonight on behalf of the, the River House Restaurant, Mr. Joe Ledbetter with Brick Tops, as well as the ownership, and we have two members of the ownership that are here who also will be speaking briefly. And it's, it's rare that, you know, I don't think I've ever been before this council to express concern about another petition, but in this particular case, as you probably are where I represented Frank Callender for many years, as well as Mr. Savrell, and now currently the existing ownership. And, and we do have concerns with this request. And first, I would like to very, very express our extreme appreciation to staff and to Mr. Ferris, who have opened their doors, and I, I think we've moved in a direction that's a little bit closer, but I think that there's a, a little bit more that we could do. This is not your typical scenario, which is up there on the ground. This is a, a case where, where an access easement has been afforded to a property for over 30-plus years. It was paid for with due consideration, and so we have two property owners that share a child. And so we, we, we originally requested an opportunity to postpone so that the two parents could discuss the child, but in this particular, you know, you know, but instead, I think what we've, while we still like to do that, we've offered some additional recommendations that we think could further enhance and make this better. And I'd just like to run through those with you quickly. The first is, is there's clearly a lack of signage. I mean, we hear the applicant saying, "Safety, safety, safety." Any of you who went out there on that site, and I know many of you have, where was the striping? The stop signs were substandard. What efforts were really, truly taken to provide for safety? And the reality is, none, very little. And so what we would suggest is striping, and I think that your, 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 your staff has recommended that too, but we think that that could go further. We think, just like those photographs that we saw your mobility folks show up here earlier with the color contrasting pavement, that we think is a first step, let's start with some signage, real signage, not a, not a makeshift stop sign. Let's use some color contrasting pavement, you know, let's go ahead and put in some LED activated stop signs or warning signs. They use them in most urban areas. They're very, very effective. And so we would suggest that this be done as a first phase. Our client is extremely concerned with somebody putting a gate immediately across the entrance, the only entrance to the River House, and having zero control. It's being operated by a forklift operator. We believe that-
Excuse me, Mayor, that's three minutes.
Okay. We believe that that's an infringement to the, to the rights, so we just would like your consideration to that effect. I know others will speak. I could, I could answer any questions that you may have. So we think that it's a phased approach, and we would request your consideration.
Okay. Let, Joe Ledbetter, please. Name an address for the record.
Yeah. I am Joe Ledbetter, Nashville, Tennessee, and representing River House, and I've not been sworn in.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. We've been open several years here and haven't had any instances that we know of, reports from our purveyors or customers. And I know that Frank Callender was there for 33 years and told us he had one incident, so we all understand and all agree that safety is very important, but as Don said, our major concern with this proposal is that we're going to have a third party controlling the access to our parking. And for a successful restaurant, parking is everything. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Tom Brunberg?
Passed.
Passed, thank you. Name an address for the record. You've been sworn in.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. Alex Griswold, 274 Orange Grove, Palm Beach, Florida. Appreciate you taking the time, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Commissioners. I'm a lifelong resident of Palm Beach County and have been a real estate investor here for 10 years. We're extremely concerned to learn about the safety issues that are referenced in this submittal, but our neighbor has never contacted us about any specific issue. And we were told from previous owners that there was only one known incident over 35 years. So we just wish our neighbor, our neighbor had notified us and involved us in this process. My concern in the proposal as stated would give, is that it would give our neighbor direct and exclusive control of the traffic flow to our site. We feel the system without additional conditions could potentially be used to create economic hardship and customer frustration and eventual deterrence. Additionally, these gates, if closed for a non-regulated amount of time, could themselves create a hazardous issue with cars backing up onto PGA Boulevard during busy lunch hours and dinner hours, frustrating motors and creating traffic jams for emergency vehicles if they're needed. Keep in mind, this easement is our only entry and exit, and this proposal gives full and complete exclusive control to our neighboring property owner without any meaningful protective conditions or time constraints. It is worth pointing out that we have spent nearly $50,000 in legal fees to come up with creative solutions in an effort to work with our neighbor's larger comprehensive plan. This includes trying to find other means of ingress and egress, including another road. But let me be clear, the Marina has not provided a viable option that conveys clear title to us to protect any additional or, or additional easement in a different area. To conclude, please consider this, the implication of giving our neighbor a non-conditional clicker to turn off and on our business before voting on this. There are so many other options to achieve safety, and we are ready, willing, and able to sit at the table with the city and our neighbor to come up with a solution, and we just ask that you give this a little bit more time and consideration and, and look at additional options. Thank you.
Thank you. Glenn Stroh. Glenn, have you been sworn in?
I have, yes.
Okay. Name an address for the record, please. Thank you.
Glenn Stroh, 804 Harbor Isles Place, Palm Beach Gardens, Florida. Thank you for the time in the last day or so to address some of our concerns, and thank you for our time tonight. I've lived just a little over a mile from this site for the last 12 years, raised four kids and two grandkids within a mile of the site. I know this site well. One of the reasons I invested in this property is because of realizing the asset of this site to the community. This application as proposed would materially interfere with our tenant's business, the value of our asset, and the ability of your citizens to utilize the waterfront and access the waterfront for dining. Neither the tenant or us, or I spoke to Frank Callender and Doug Panel in the last few days, have had more than one instance in 32 years for Frank, and we've heard not one incident of safety at all. We've not been contacted by Marina, a cust, the Marina, a customer, or an employee of the tenants. So we're very concerned about safety. We want to work with the city and with our neighbor to resolve any safety concerns, but as Alex said, there are better, better alternatives than that which has been proposed, and we'd like to be part of that solution. The safety concerns that you saw in the videos, they're aggravated by the Marina using the easement for an operational area, not for a crossing. That's why the three gates are located so far apart. They, simply to maneuver and go through a crossing requires an area that's simply a little wider than a forklift. This area is, is very, very wide. Finally, as Alex said, the applicant has age, has represented the new entrance, and we failed to make a connection to this new entrance that's just been built. There is no way to get legal egress on that alternative way of exiting the property, and we're still open to exploring that option. It's, it's a great option if we can come up with a way of legally egressing. We care about safety. We'll work diligently with staff and the Marina to find a better plan, and we peacefully coexisted together for 35 years between Frank's ownership and ours, and we look forward to coming up with a win-win situation. I think it is out there, given a few more weeks. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Marty Perry? And Marty, you've been sworn in?
I have.
Name an address for the record, please.
Marty Perry, 4500 PGA Boulevard. Just very briefly, and I've had conversations with two of you, and I'm going to try to, not, not to reiterate that, but in any event, I'd like to start frankly with just the comment that was made by Mr. Whittles, and that was that he's exactly correct, an easement is not ownership. He went on to say that the, his client owns the, the land occupying the easement, okay, but they own it subject to the easement. So the reality here is that what you're being asked to do is you're being asked to impose these guard gates, okay, on an easement that these people have a right to use. And basically, what's happening here is the applicant is drawing you into the picture here, so that you become a party to creating an obstacle to their ability to use the easement, and that's a problem. The reality really is, is that, and I appreciate the staff's efforts to come up with conditions. We don't, we don't think the conditions go far enough. Mr. Herring has proposed some additional conditions that we think would, would help and expand on those things. What's needed here is some time for the parties to sit down with your staff and finalize a set of conditions that everybody can agree on, because you're not just dealing with the applicant, you're dealing with an applicant who has an easement that is subordinated but to this easement. I mean, the, the reality is, is these people have some property rights here, and that's being ignored. You can't impose these conditions with, on, on them where they have no right to say anything about it. So we're here to object, simply to ask you for some additional time. You know, there's no harm in letting the, the time go by for them to sit down with your staff and with the other side to resolve this. The issue came up about the alternative access. There is good, good potential for an alternative access, but the reality is, is these two parties need to sit down with a third party to resolve the ability to acquire that additional access. That would eliminate the need for this easement altogether, would be better for everyone if that could be done. I don't know whether that'll happen, but certainly there's nothing wrong with a lot. But if you approve this condition, okay, what you do is you, you remove the incentive for the applicant to make any further effort to do anything. They simply install their gates. That's, all that's going to do is lead to litigation over the easement rights, and that's, that's not going to solve anything. You're going to end up with the problem continuing. I suggest that you give real consideration to not approving this tonight, allowing some time for the parties to work together, whether it's two weeks or, or a month. If they can't resolve within that period of time, come back and you can talk at it, talk about it again. But that's a reasonable approach to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Seeing no other cars, I'm going to close the public hearing, and let's bring it back for discussion. Who would like to start?
Well, start, why not?
Go ahead, Rochelle. Actually, before we begin, I do need a motion to approve and a second.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 44-2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, so let's open it for discussion. Go ahead, Rochelle.
Okay. I have a couple of questions. Ann, first, we talked about that the, the gate would be down for a minute, could be down four times an hour. What was not mentioned was how long it takes from the time the operator pushes the button on the remote till that gate comes down, and is the gate padded? What happens? Cars are going through, pushes the button, what's going to stop that thing from hitting a car?
The forklift driver has a person that's there that helps them and guides them and lets them know if someone is in the driveway. So he would wait until he's given the go-ahead to close the gates. They wouldn't close the gate if there's a car going through the gate, through the, through the driveway.
Okay.
So, once it goes down, the forklift goes through, and then it goes back up.
Can you put up the visual that shows the three gates, please?
I don't know if I can.
And I'll ask the next question at the same time.
I think it was the staff presentation.
Was it on the staff presentation?
Yeah, it was the staff presentation.
The one that had the three gates on it?
Yes. There's a picture.
There's, there's one. Yeah, that's not that one, it's the, it was on the staff presentation. I guess that one, no.
There we go.
Okay. Well, it's not as, it's not as good as on the staff presentation.
Where's yours?
Okay, if you can get that back up. I'll ask you the other question in the, in the meantime. So we've got three gates and one forklift moving around in an area where he could potentially have to put up and down all three gates at the same time.
All three, all three gates go down at the same time?
They're all worked on the one click?
Correct. So they all go down and they all go up at the same time?
Has any attempt been made not to move boats during peak restaurant hours, during the time of lunch, the, the one hour to two hours when lunch is at its, and traffic would be in and out the most?
Right. That unfortunately is a peak time, especially on the weekends, when you have boaters going out during the day for Saturday and Sunday in particular. The, the, the number of boats that can actually go out and come back during a day is limited to the, the number of forklifts that are in operation. If there's one forklift in operation, it takes between 10 and 12 minutes for a forklift to make a round trip from either the rack to the water or from the water to the rack. So there's only so many boats that can be put in the water and taken out at any given, on any given day. They have scheduled timeframes for the boat owners when they want to put their boat in the water, they tell them when they have to be there. So if they want to go out in the morning- So, if they want to go out in the morning, they either come really early or they come when they're told they have to be there in order to get their boat out in the water. And then when they return, sometimes they leave their boats there and the boats are put back on the racks later in the evening when traffic is down.
Later in the evening and earlier in the morning are not necessarily around lunchtime.
No.
On, on the map, as somebody who's lived here a long time and gone to the River House many, many times, I know that road and when you're coming around and you're going this way and you hit that first gate, if the gate was not there, here's some of my concerns. If the gate is not there, like it is now, the way those boats are parked, you can't see whether the forklift's coming, even if you have a stop sign and even if you wait and even if it's flashing, you stop at that stop sign, you can't see that forklift coming before you start to go anyway. So, part of the problem is that blind spot there and the need for a gate because of the blind spot. I'm addressing the request by Mr. Herring for just a stop sign and a phase in.
There are stop signs there now. There are three stop signs. There's a stop sign in this location here, there's a stop sign in this location here, and there's a stop sign in this location here.
So, that's one of my concerns about waiting. Other concerns, safety is number one and a comment that, I mean, for me, one incident is too many and the fact that we only had one in 35 years. If you're looking at the near misses on the camera on, that we clearly have, any one of those could have been another and because it didn't happen there, doesn't mean it's not going to happen tomorrow. So, that's a real concern in the healthcare business, in the hospital, I'm a pharmacist, anybody who knows anything about going to the, if you have a near miss, I mean, you take action, you're required by the government to take action to make sure that doesn't happen again. And when you look at the photos of that and those near misses, it's kind of hard not to require action. I also have a question because one of the speakers mentioned that this is new, that the owners did not give any indication that there were any problems or that they were going to move ahead with anything and it's my understanding that back in 2018, there was an administrative amendment petition by the owner to change the entrance to avoid these problems at that time. It was never acted on, but, so is it the case that the restaurant had no idea that there were issues? Has this been going on because they're requesting more time to be able to work it out with staff? And if that time has already been afforded, that could impact decisions as well.
Thank you for that, yes. The, the property was purchased in June of 2015. They began discussions with the restaurant property owner in the fall of 2015 to discuss how to amend, make this circulation work because the Marina owners and the investors for the Marina recognized that there was a huge liability almost immediately. In August of 2016, we filed an application to relocate the entrance of the restaurant on the north side so that you would go up along the water and come into the restaurant. That application was withdrawn because the relationship and the communication with the property owner evolved and it became apparent that he was not going to connect to that roadway. The property owner, the applicant for the Marina, in July of 2017 filed an addition, another application for an administrative amendment to relocate the road based on an understanding and agreements that they would be, the restaurant would be connecting to the north side through that new roadway. The Marina went through with the construction of the new entrance and the new driveway to get to the new entrance. When it came time to connect, the property owner for the restaurant declined to connect. So, at this point, the roadway section is there and it could be connected and provide access that completely eliminates access through the Marina. That is obviously the preference of, I believe, of also of city staff and the Marina owner would be willing to continue to discuss that connection. At this point, they have, they feel they have the obligation and the right to put the gates in to provide for the safety of the public.
Thank you. Matthew, do you have any questions, comments?
Sure. I toured the site this morning in preparation for tonight's discussion. My first question is, I saw these boats with only four engines on the back. I wonder why they couldn't put more engines on the back of those boats? And how many engines it really takes? That being said, when Don Herring speaks, I listen very carefully. His concern, as I understand it, is if I had a driveway and somebody had a gate and they could stop people coming to my business, it could possibly create a problem for me. How do you address that, how do you address that concern? That's my first question. And second of all, is there any way to work something out? Can you all get to, I mean, you've got Steve Matheson here, you've got Ken Tuma, you've got Ann, you've got Don, you guys are friends, you work together. Is there any way to work something out?
Do you want to answer that?
If I could interject, please. Steve Matheson, for the record, I have been sworn in, along with my partner John Whittles. We certainly are always willing to talk to neighbors and to work with neighbors. We have a pressing, real, current safety issue and I think as Rochelle brought up, when you get to that stop sign, there is a lack of visibility. And when you have that huge forklift going across, it's imperative that we create a more safe situation, which we have put on the table and we are ready to act upon now. Now, is it possible later to come back and work on another resolution or another access point? Sure, but we believe it's necessary, we believe we have a responsibility to move forward tonight and get this done.
Any other questions, Matthew? Carl?
If I may, I'm sorry to answer your other, your question. There is a condition of approval proposed that requires that the gates be kept in the up position unless the forklift is driving through and then they have to go back immediately up as soon as they get out of the, out of the intersection.
You may want to consider, and this is not my business, but there's, there's a road that goes into this area that's on the south of the access road. It's the south, the west quadrant and somebody can just wander into there, you may want to consider a gate there as well. It's just a thought.
Carl?
Well, I don't want to say anything on it because we've got 50 minutes to get this going, but I have to. So, I think we all know what the resolution is, is getting the third party involved so that other easement can allow access up to the waterway so they can make a right and they can use the parking and they don't have to cut through the Marina. So, but going on what Rochelle said, if they're going to go through the Marina, we can't have the potential of someone driving under a boat by a tractor or a forklift. It's not a normal stop. Something else that nobody else has said, that now, River House is now open for lunch, which bleeds into happy hour and the happier you want to get, the sooner you're going to get over there. So, happy hour, lunch to three to four and then into dinner. So, we've quadrupled the amount of traffic, so therefore we've quadrupled the amount of potential for a mishap. So, what I would like, I feel like we're almost trying to mitigate because you guys, I don't know, everybody's been there for 30 something years, why hasn't there been an, I would want to say an interlocal agreement or an interlo, agreement with the people that own the easement there, I think it's O'America Bank or whoever. If that gets in place, can we change this around to make sure that River House has a smooth flow access for the patrons and the citizens of Palm Beach Gardens to access that without being delayed? So, that's what you guys need to move forward to.
Look, at the end of the day, and I'm just going to chime in before you do end because of time, but as a resident and going to that place, I've always wondered why you have to run through the Marina to get to where you got to go, to the restaurant. And I sympathize with the restaurant because you just want to operate and you don't want to have anybody there, but my thought was, if something, now that this is in front of us, if something happens during lunchtime or someone's rushing to get in and out of there, I don't know, we're liable now for not ensuring that there's safety or that we didn't, that we ignored the possibility that something happened and we didn't take the necessary steps. I mean, at the end of the day, you're all adults here and you guys share property and it baffles me as just a regular person that you haven't come up with a solution and worked towards a solution because ultimately I think everybody would like to see a regular solution and it seems like there's an opportunity to make a regular solution. At the end of the day, too, you still have to come back for permitting, which still takes some time. You still have to do some upgrades to the roadway anyway and from what I understand, the Marina is probably going to come back at some point with plans to change their entire Marina project, which is going to require some changes to the way the ingress and egress is to the restaurant. So, use this time now because, look, I don't want to have to deal with this. I think this is something that you guys should be able to come to terms with and you should be able to sit down and take, come up with a plan. I don't understand the legalities of what egress is and who has access to what and who owns what piece of roadway that comes in there, but ultimately, I think this is the time for all of you to figure out the best way to come up with a solution for today and for the future and before the permit comes in, if you want me to sit down and figure it out with you, I'll do it, but I don't know if I have the answers to it, but please, come up with a solution because this is, this is really something that I thought should have been able to have been worked out amongst the parties and I think you really can. So, before we get through the permitting process and everything else, please get together and do it. Other than that, is there any other discussion? Okay, so let's make a mo, anyone might want to make a motion?
Motion, a second.
Okay, so let's have a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No, 4-0. And please work together.
Thank you.
All right. Resolution 45-2019, can the clerk read the title, please?
Resolution 45-2019, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving an amendment to the PGA Office Center Plan, Community Development, PCD, master plan to allow the combination of parcel A and parcel B, realignment of the northern 400 feet of RCA Center Drive for a new intersection location with Kyoto Gardens Drive, adding 1.3 acres of lake area to parcel A and revising conditions of approval. The PGA Office Center, PCD, is generally located east of Military Trail, west of alternate A1A, and north and south of Kyoto Gardens Drive, as more particularly described herein, providing an effective date for other purposes.
Thank you. We'll open the public hearing. Are there any expertises? I think we all spoke with the applicant yesterday. Any other expertises?
Yesterday.
Anything else? Okay, good. Thank you. Presentation, please.
Yes. Good evening. Ken Tuma with Urban Design Kill Day Studios. My address is 610 Clamata Street, West Palm Beach. Quick story, last night I was in the lovely city of Tamarack till 5:00 in the morning and I'm sure you all don't want to do that. So, I'm going to do a very quick presentation. This is about the PGA Office.
What time did your presentation start?
What's that, sir? I'm done? Go, okay. At least let me at least get my name out. It's about the PGA Office Center. I'm here on behalf of Florida Power and Light. The request in front of you tonight is for an office building of 270,000 square feet. The request that is in front of you was started in, sir? Oh, I have been sworn in. Yes, did I go that fast? I'm sorry, thank you. I have been sworn in and this is a lot of pressure. This is a large project and a lot of pressure. So, good evening again. So, here we go. PGA Office Center, it's located on 86.34 acres. The request that is in front of you this evening is to amend the master plan. The amendment to the master plan is to eliminate parcel B, to relocate a bus stop and to shift the existing roadway further to the west. And then finally, there's a site plan in front of you as a companion application for 270,000 square feet of office. A little bit of history and then I'm going to jump right to the punchline. So, this project's been approved for a very long time and it was originally approved back in 2005. At that point in time, the traffic and currency for this site was, was placed on this site. The capacity letter was received and that, in that capacity, has been built into every transportation study that has been in this area from that point forward. In 2011, Florida Power and Light had the opportunity to purchase this site, they did purchase this site. And then in 2013, I came before you and we established this, which is the PGA design guidelines that were approved by the City Council. Those guidelines are kind of the guardrails of what this project is being approved against. In 2018, FPL has done several improvements, off-site turn lanes, a military trail, they did off-site landscaping on alternate A1A. And then in 2018, they had the opportunity to purchase a 4.25 acre parcel of land, which they did. That is a request for the amendment identified on the screen in front of you, a parcel B, that's a 4.25 acre parcel of land that they purchased. So, therefore, the request is to have it all as one parcel of land. This is the proposed design, this is the proposed center, the requested site plan. The, one of the key items, Mr. Hughes is here and Mr. Kiesewski is here, but one of the key items in the design of this site was the eminently flexible modular design that came from the senior executives of Florida Power and Light and the intent of that is to allow for flexibility. It's important to note that the PGA campus will not replace the Juno Beach campus. The idea of this building and the way it was laid out was focused on a couple key items. It was on building resiliency, operational efficiency, storm response, and business continuity. The building itself is designed to be a category five building. It's intended to design a 500-year flood. There are a lot of other important characteristics that I'm going to skip through, but one of the key items is the garage. The parking garage has a 15-foot floor height on the ground floor and the purpose of that is to allow for storm riders to live within that, or to stay within that parking garage during a storm, to allow for those trucks to be closer to when a hurricane occurs. So, very quickly, here's the requested site plan. The access points are on the screen in front of you. This is an additional lake area to create that 500, that 500-foot flood elevation. We have to have additional lake, 1.3 acres. There is a helo stop requested in this. It was approved originally back in 2013. A helo stop has identified where the oval is located. The requirement for that helo stop as part of that original approval is that it is over 800 feet away from the community to the north. It is 1,322 feet away. Some traffic items, some key elements here from traffic, the bus stop, there's a bus stop proposed where Florida Power and Light will be paying $25,000 to allow for the construction of a future bus stop out here on Winchester, on North Military Trail. It's basically where this F is. They'll also be adding a bus stop here and then also they'll be relocating Kyoto, relocating RCA Center Boulevard 260 feet west to the location identified on the screen. And why, why are they doing that? One of the requirements for this site, they are required to warrant for a signal at that intersection. That signal will be needed in the future. Our traffic engineers here identified that that will be required. So, you have this road, you shift it a little further over, it was staff's point, shift it a little bit further over to the west to allow for more queuing of vehicles for alternate A1A and the railroad track as it allows for additional spacing. That is not a required improvement by the county. It was a direction, a decision made by Florida Power and Light and your step, but it is above and beyond what is required. So, here's the design and I know you all have seen this, I'm going to fly through these screens. It's a four-story building, the four-story building, excuse me, a six-story building and it's up to 101 feet of height. The design guidelines allow up to 165 feet of height. You'll notice that the parking garage here in the rear. And here's a view of the building looking towards the southeast. This is a cross-section to kind of give you an idea of what's happening as you enter the building. Very unique design, it was designed by Perkins and Will, unique design here. This is the lobby as you enter into the building, a two-story kind of atrium area. Down the ground floor, the kitchen facility is the entranceway, the second floor is the met, is the, where the physical, where the fitness facility is and medical facility. And then you have this grand atrium on the top, which allows light to go through the building. Here are four stories of office on both sides and you'll notice that designing, you'll see the footprint kind of going back to the eminently flexible modular design, which would allow any FPL business unit to move into that building. And then here on the right-hand side is the parking garage. It's important to note that that first ground, that first floor is 15 feet of height, important because that allows those trucks to come in there during a storm event. And then the two other stories are above it, a parking garage. And then on top of it, unlike most parking garages that you see that we bring before you, where there are cars parked on the top, there aren't cars parked on the top, there's actually a photobooth take roof on the top. So, it's a very unique design. This is looking towards the south, or looking towards the southwest. Here's a view of the parking garage. You can see where the photobooth takes cells are on the top of the parking garage. You'll notice some cool design features that are wrapped around the garage. Here's another section, I walked through this in detail before, so I'll zoom through this. This is the ground floor and the mezzanine space in a, in a footprint. Here are the level three, four, five, and six, which are the office spaces. And again, noticing the empty, or the large And again, noticing the, the empty, or the large, the large spaces to allow for that eminently flexible space. The landscaping plan is in front of you on the screen. It's a little different entry, and I think it's important to note, and this was a big discussion point, the entry identified in front of you on the screen in pink, there are no palm trees there. There are no oak trees, and that's on purpose. This is a public utility. You want to have that ability to have that road open right away, so when those people are parked in that, in that parking garage during a storm, they don't have to come out and cut a tree out of their way. They have the ability to get right out. Here's a view of the entrance. This is a really neat, unique entrance. Perkins and Will did the landscape architecture. They did a really neat job. As you drive through the entrance, here's a view of the site. And here's a requested site plan, and here's a view driving in. And then here's a look at the, at the cul-de-sac of the entry point, and here's a view of what that cul-de-sac will look like. It's a water feature, a very unique water feature. And here's another view of the landscape. These are sable, sable palms and a grove through here. These are cypress trees, and then kind of this native pine, flat wood area. So there's only one waiver request tonight. This is the final slide. So there's only one waiver request tonight. That waiver request in front of you is because we are having electric vehicle spots, thirty-eight electrical vehicle spots, the way you're, the way the code works, which I suspect will change here shortly, the way the code works is those spots are not allowed to be counted towards required parking. So the electrical vehicle spots, which FPL is going to have thirty-eight proposed spots, we're requesting that those do get counted towards the required parking, and staff supports that waiver. Ladies and gentlemen, in less than two minutes, I've gone through a presentation that could have taken twenty minutes. Here to answer any questions you may have, we have our whole team assembled. Mr. Kiesewski is here, and I think he'd like to say a word or two.
Thank you. Don Kiesewski, Florida Power and Light Company Director of External Affairs, seven hundred Universal Boulevard, Juno Beach, Florida. I have been sworn in. We will be real, I will be really brief, and we just did not want this moment to go by tonight without commending your staff. We want to express our gratitude for the diligence with which they have approached our project, from your city manager to Natalie to Joanne. They have been professionals along the entire journey. It has not been without its wrinkles, but again, they have represented you and the city residents with honor and distinction. My team works with municipalities throughout the entire state, well over two hundred, and I can tell you, your team is best in class. It's been a pleasure working with them, and we appreciate your interest in our project.
Thank you. Is there a staff presentation?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Staff, staff thanks, staff does thank the applicant on working throughout this and pro, throughout this process, particularly on the, on the revised road alignment that the applicant has covered. I especially want to thank Joanne for her, her really hard work on this huge project. She's done a wonderful job, and staff recommends approval of resolution forty-five and forty-six. Thank you.
Okay, do you have some cards on this? Peggy Krull? Come on up, please. Falling will be John Carr. Get in the queue. And Peggy, have you been sworn in?
No.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you go?
Yes.
Name and address for the record, please.
Peggy Krull, forty-two eighty Hazel Avenue, apartment A, Palm Beach Gardens, Winchester Courts, which is right facing this building. My question regards the heliport, which came up several years ago when FPNL was first talking about building. I went to several meetings, as did some of my other neighbors, and what we expressed at the time was our concern about noise. Yes, we are a city. Yes, there is noise in a city. I've lived here for twenty-six years, and as another neighbor of mine has often said, she has watched the gardens disappear from Palm Beach Gardens. So we recognize the, the possible need for the building, for FPNL, for everything that's going on, but I'm wondering about the heliport. Is it only going to be for FPNL personnel? Is it going to be opened up to the public for, for hire to use as a way to get into Palm Beach Gardens? And that's my, my basic question.
Okay, normally, we don't do a question and answer, but I will ask the applicant to address that quickly, if you could, please. I think it's a valid question.
It would have been addressed on a longer presentation, I think.
Yes, ma'am. That's, thank you so much again, Kent Tum with Urban Design. So Florida Power and Light does have helicopters, so it's an important part of their business. What's being proposed on this site is a helo stop, meaning that the helicopter lands, takes off, drops its folks off. There's no repairs, there's no fueling, it doesn't stay there overnight. Florida Power and Light participates in something called Fly Neighborly. It's a program that has been established by the Helicopter Association. It is something that has been implemented on their Juno Beach campus for many, many years. In fact, that Juno Beach campus has a helipad, and that helipad, I had the opportunity several years ago to speak to the town manager of Juno Beach to see, were there any problems with the helicopter? And the answer is no, because FPL provides the Fly Neighborly program, which means in essence, they do not fly over residential areas unless they, unless it's a safety situation. They've, what happens is they fly very high altitudes, they avoid residential, and they avoid any night or week, night or early morning flights. In essence, a helicopter, how it works is, the noise isn't when you go down, the noise is when you go up, when they, when they get the engines up. So they take off quickly, and they go up in the air in a very quick direction, and then they also, I suspect Mr. Lohman maybe had a point about that. But the, but the, but what they do is, they file, they typically file the, there are flight areas, and they typically file, follow like I-95 and PGA Boulevard.
So to, to follow up on the question that Peggy had written on here, it's only for FPNL, there's no public use of that helo stop?
That, that is a correct statement, yes, sir.
And according to the applicant in our meeting yesterday, there, the number of helicopter trips has greatly declined over the years to Juno. We don't know what it's going to be here in Palm Beach Gardens, but, but their comment yesterday after the question was that. And, and also, in speaking with the mayor of Juno Beach, he's never had a complaint from a resident that he's known of.
And the helicopter's kept at the airport.
Well, also, it's at the farthest spot of the property from Winchester Courts. It's all the way over on the other side behind the property.
So those, those questions were brought up, Peggy, so normally, again, we don't do the Q and A.
Yeah, we did, we did all that.
John, John Carr, is John here?
Yes.
John, come on up. And after that is Steve Matheson. Please be ready.
Good morning, or good afternoon, or good evening. We've been here a while. I'm John Carr, Chairman of the Palm Beach North Chamber of Commerce. I have been sworn in. Fifty-five twenty, North PGA Boulevard. And as you know, the chamber typically does not put a position on private projects. However, this is a unique project, and we felt it was in our interest to go ahead and tell you of our support of this. The tro, the project has been considered by both the Palm Beach North Government Affairs Committee and our Executive Committee, and we both have support and endorse this project. The impact of the project to the community is significant, excuse me, and we would ask in your, you know, support for this. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Steve Matheson? You've been sworn in, Steve?
Yes, sir.
Name and address for the record.
Yes, sir. Steve Matheson, one twenty-one Emerald Key Lane, resident of Palm Beach Gardens. Thank you very much. Proud to be now. I just wanted to say, very similar to the hearings I've attended previously on this matter, I am extremely excited here in the capacity as a resident and as a business owner, and as someone who grew up here along with Dawn, knowing that this is FPL doubling down and committing to this community, and I cannot be more excited. I've been very fortunate to be involved in what I believe are some of the most significant turning points in our city, the Gardens Mall, Avenir, and others. This is one of those turning points, and I can't tell you how much I feel this is a benefit to all of our residents, and I applaud what FPL is doing, and I fully support what they're doing. Ask you to do the same.
Thank you. Dana Middleton, followed by Dave Markarian. You've been sworn in, Dana?
I have, yes. Dana Middleton, one oh two Delane Way in Palm Beach Gardens. Good evening. And I'm here on behalf of the PGA Corridor Association. I am the chair, and we had the opportunity of hearing a presentation from FPL on February thirteenth, and we were really impressed with the concept of the, the project and have been kept up to date thus far. In our last meeting, we unanimously supported the project and are looking forward to it moving forward. Also, as a resident and a business owner, we think it's a great addition to the city, and we, you know, we really look upon the, the planning and department and know that they really put a lot of thought into it and are looking forward to the, the end result. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Dave Markarian, last card. You've been sworn in, Dave?
I have, thank you. Dave Markarian, two one five Via Condado Way, Palm Beach Gardens, resident of the best community in Palm Beach Gardens, Maribella. I'm very excited about this project, and here's why. Other than a substation, this now puts FPNL's footprint in our community in a permanent way. It continues a trend as well, that we're diversifying the growth and evolution of our town. So it's not just a great place to live, but also a great place to make a living. It's a perfect mix of business and residential coexisting in a, in a cohesive way. It also continues a trend where our sons and daughters can come home and raise families and create a better future for themselves. I have five kids, some of them I actually do want them to come home, and, and, and let's not overlook the most important thing about this company. Yes, this is designed to allow machines and equipment to be put inside and to be able to restore power in an effective way after a storm. But the mission, the greater mission of Next Era FPL, is its commitment to the earth and to the environment and to the atmosphere. It's the leader in clean and renewable energy. It is the leading developer of clean energy in this nation, in North America, and it's the leading generator of clean and renewable energy. And if you looked at the math and looked at the tons and tons and tons of knocks and socks that don't go up into the air because of their commitment to clean and renewable energy, that alone, to me, single-handedly makes this project worthy of the support of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. That is all the cards we have. We'll close the public hearing. Can I get a motion in a second to approve?
I'll make a motion for resolution forty-five, two thousand and nineteen.
I'll second the motion.
All right. Any discussion?
I only have something to say. I purposely made this a campaigning issue for me last year, and most of the community, even, even immediately surrounding the trail in Kyoto, I was in multiple HOA meetings there. Everybody, and I told you guys this yesterday, everybody supported it because of the jobs that it's going to bring to Palm Beach Gardens. And Peggy's electricity will never go off, because you're literally right there. So, it's a great project. It's the vision of Palm Beach Gardens. We've been excited for years. I remember I asked you a couple years ago in an email, if we can move it along as quickly as possible because of the way that the council's going to be, you know, ever evolving, we would like to see this done before we are, we're out of here. So thank you very much.
Matt?
I have nothing to add.
Michelle?
Well, Kent's presentation was very short for a very, very long process, and it just doesn't seem right not to thank FPNL for working with the city the way they did to iron out those small wrinkles, as Don put it, and, and get to the place we are tonight. It is a beautiful building, a definite asset. It's amazing that it's cat five and still looks the way that it did, and thank you to the team, Kevin, for, for making that happen as Chair of the Environment and Sustainability Committee for the chamber. I am very excited to have another showplace in the city, especially in the city of Palm Beach Gardens. So, thank you for, again, for all, all you did.
Thank you. Just two quick comments. I know we talked about the LEED certification. I know, I know the, the pain in the butt it is to check boxes, so I'm okay with it not being LEED certified, but it is going to be an amazingly sustainable building, and I think that's really important. And when it comes back to the mobility, glad, glad to have FPNL, who understands this community, not just a, you know, somebody that's buying some property that's never been in the city and understands the importance of that region, being a leader and making sure that mobility and transportation around the area is, was, was, was taken into consideration. And since you guys were the first ones to do it, everybody that comes after that should make sure they follow suit. And of course, our mobility plan will allow that. So with that, can I have a vote? On five, are aye? Aye. Any opposed? Four zero, thank you. Resolution forty-six?
Resolution forty-six, two thousand and nineteen, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving a site plan within the PGA Office Center Plan Community Development, PCD, to allow the development of a two hundred and seventy thousand square foot office building, three-story parking garage and heli stop. The subject site is approximately thirty-seven acres, more or less, and is located east of Military Trail, west of alternate A-1A, and south of Kyoto Gardens Drive, as more particularly described herein, providing conditions of approval, providing waivers, providing an effective date for the purposes.
Thank you. I'm assuming there's no presentation. Does anybody have any discussion? Okay, can we just open the public hearing, close the public hearing, make the motion?
Motion, resolution forty-six, two thousand and nineteen.
All approved.
I'll second.
Four zero, Michelle, second, thank you. All approved?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Miracle League.
Before we move to the Miracle League, Mr. Mayor, I think, I think maybe just to make sure that this gets done before we reach our time limit, I would recommend that you take a motion, have a motion and a vote to move resolution thirty-nine to the next item so that you can adopt your millage rate, your maximum millage rate, and then you could go back to the rest of your agenda.
Can I have a motion to move resolutions, resolution thirty-nine to the?
Second.
You all in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right. Okay, let's read resolution thirty-nine, twenty nineteen.
Resolution thirty-nine, two thousand and nineteen, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, adopting a proposed maximum millage rate for the City of Palm Beach Gardens, fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty, setting the date, time, and place of the first public hearing, providing an effective date for the purposes.
All right, can I have a presentation, please?
Yes. For the, good evening, for the record, Alan Owens, Finance Administrator, and we'll, we'll be brief. This is the first part of the process for a budget adoption. As you know, we have to set the maximum millage rate and set the date and time of the first public hearing for the tax notices that will be sent out at the first of next month. So as far as the proposed rate, staff is recommending a proposed millage rate of five point five five with a debt service rate of zero, as all of our general obligation debt is paid off this year for a total millage of five point five five, which is down from this current year's total, rate of five point six zero zero three. This proposed maximum operating rate of five 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 is four point one nine percent above the rollback rate, which is five point three two six eight. As you know, the rates can be lowered during the hearings, but they cannot be increased without going through a very expensive notice via mail to each individual tax or property owner. So practically speaking, they cannot be raised. In addition, we also have to notify the county the date, time, and place of the first public hearing. They, these dates cannot conflict with the county's dates or the school board dates, which you see before you. So staff is recommending that the first public hearing be held on September fifth, two thousand and nineteen, at seven PM. And with that, staff's recommendation then is to approve resolution thirty-nine, two thousand and nineteen, setting a maximum operating millage of five point five five, and setting the date for the first public hearing on September fifth, two thousand and nineteen, at seven PM in the City Council chambers.
Thank you. There's no cards on this, so we'll close the hearing. Can I get a motion in a second to approve?
I'll move to approve resolution thirty-nine, two thousand and nineteen, setting a maximum operation millage rate of five point five five, and setting the date for first public of 5.55, and setting the date for first public hearing on September 5th, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the City Council chambers.
And I'll second the motion.
Is there any discussion? Just a simple reminder, this is just setting the maximum millage rate. We have an opportunity to discuss lowering it in the future if we choose to do so. No other discussion? Let's go ahead and have a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Matthew, would you like to vote on the maximum millage rate of 5.55?
Yes.
Aye? Okay, four zero, thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
All right, let's move back. Resolution 52, 2019. Can the clerk read the title, please?
Resolution 52, 2019, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending Resolution 22, 2017, to modify a condition of approval for the Nuvo Business Center at the Gardens Plan Unit Development PUD related to bioscience development timing requirements. The Nuvo Business Center PUD is located on the northeast corner of Riverside Drive and Buckeye Street, south of Burns Road, as more particularly described herein, providing conditions of approval, providing an effective date for the purposes.
Is there a presentation?
Very briefly, I've already talked to all of you in your agenda reviews about this. What this is, is a minor amendment to the Nuvo Riverside, the Nuvo Business Center's approving resolution. All it's doing is amending a condition of approval related to timing for the construction of Phase 2 or Building Number 2, and much like what we did with Avenir, in this particular instance, Avenir, we made some exceptions and altered their workforce housing requirement, and they funded a workforce housing program in Lew. And in this case, we were looking to do a very similar thing, but then this bioscience requirement and the timing of building this building was an added benefit to the city to help mitigate the impacts of this development, and it's just not financially viable. And the applicant approached us and asked for a way to help resolve the issue, and this issue of funding the Miracle League field came up, and they were very excited about the opportunity to be, to partner with the city to help fund the Miracle League fields, as you all are very familiar with, and that's what this resolution accomplishes. It makes up the shortfall to fund the Miracle League fields for the kids, and they will, Nuvo Business Center will also have co-naming rights along with the city, subject to the city's reasonable approval. And that's it. We recommend approval of Resolution 52, 2019.
Thank you. I don't have any cards on this. Is the applicant here? Thank you. Just introduce yourself real quickly, please.
Michael Sanchez with Managed Land Entitlements, representing the applicant, and we're happy to make the contribution to the city, and we thank you, thank you to Max and Ron and Natalie for their help.
Thank you for enduring a long meeting.
Sure, no problem.
All right. Does anyone have any comments?
Thank you so much for agreeing to do this. I think it's going to be great, and I can't wait to the ribbon cutting and sharing the spotlight with you there.
So, is there any other discussion? Okay, let's close the hearing and get a motion in a second.
I'll make the motion to approve Resolution 52, 2019.
Second.
All right. All in favor? All right. Thank you very much for your contribution.
Gold Star has one slide.
Okay, let's read Resolution.
Resolution 29, 2019, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, supporting the installation of a Gold Star Families Memorial Monument at Veterans Plaza within the City Hall Municipal Complex, providing an effective date for the purposes.
All right, let's open the hearing. Is there a presentation?
We're going to forego the video. I think I can just explain that a Gold Star Family is somebody who sacrificed their loved one fighting for our country in the armed forces, and we're just grateful for the acknowledgement. This is the plaque that will be across from the Veterans Plaza plaque.
And we're excited to put that in.
So, I just want you to know, thank you very much. We're very grateful.
We're sorry you had to wait so long for that.
All right, well, does anyone have any comments?
Thank you so much for approaching the city. It's a very important and very good thing to do. Thank you.
We appreciate it. Thank you. All right, can I get a motion in a second?
I move we adopt Resolution 29, 2019.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Four zero, thank you so much, and thank you for staying this whole time. I appreciate it. Okay, so now we're at the end of our.
Where is that?
So, we've all had a chance to read and discuss amongst the city manager. I assume each of you had a chance to sit with him and the city attorney as well. Does anybody have any discussion on the city attorney's contract?
Sure.
City manager's contract, sorry.
I think we're very fortunate to have such an exceptional city manager, and I move that we adopt the city manager's contract.
I'll second.
Comment?
Yeah. No one expected me to say this, and I hope you guys might back up a little bit, but, you know, our city manager is like paid fourth in the county, and I was hoping we would discuss somewhere between a three and six pay raise to bring him up to, like, we've raised the police, we've raised the fire, we've raised everybody, and I know we're giving him some extra vacation time, but I know he wants to be quiet about it. But we've looked at every contract and taken the personality out of, you know, he's our city manager, we wanted to keep him, and we want to make sure that he's compensated, you know, in the same arena as the other. Right now, Verdina, I think, is first, then you got Boca, then you got Delray, then you got Ron. So, even though he doesn't want it, he wants to be under the radar, you know, I want to look at it on the words, on the paper, take the personality out, and I think we should consider somewhere between three and six. We've given the police and the fire 24 over three years. So, you know, I think an incentive of somewhere in that range, one time, you know.
You're talking about a signing bonus more than you're talking about an actual raise?
He's talking about a raise, I think.
It would be a pay raise.
It's my understanding, too, that there hasn't been one other than a cost of living raise that the rest of the state?
No, he doesn't do it.
That's correct. As Councilmember Woods pointed out, the county administrator is the highest-paid executive in the city, government executive in the county. Then the Boca Raton city manager is $270,000. Delray Beach, before they were terminated, was $244,000. Then there's West Palm Beach at 240, and keep in mind, that's a strong mayor form of government, it's not a council manager form of government, and they make 240. And then Mr. Ferris's contract is at 239, and that, those increases have been over, from what his starting salary was back in 2001, have only been due to cost of living increases that have been, that other, that all other city employees have received. He has never asked for or sought an increase in his salary.
And I make a motion, we do a pay increase of 6%.
Do we have a second? Matthew, you'll second? Any discussion?
No, I think the number-one city in the county doesn't happen without.
Number-one city in the state.
In the state, right. Number-one city in the state doesn't just happen.
And we're going to take care of him, just the way he takes care of everybody else, and we take care of everybody else, and he's not going to fly under the radar, and we're going to address this like a contract, like we would on everybody else, and, you know, and I know we all support him. I mean, come on.
It's time.
And I think we should do this, and then it's a one-time raise for now, and that's how I feel about it, guys.
Okay, you got a motion, you got a second?
I got a motion in a second.
I got a motion for a 6%.
We have all in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Ferris. Thank you for all you do for the city. Carl, thanks for bringing it up. Let's go.
What are we doing?
Sponsorship for the 8th Annual Senator Philip D. Lewis Center Luncheon. That's Rochelle.
Can you please talk into your microphone?
Do you want to push that to the next meeting? We have time. This isn't urgent for tonight.
Not urgent for tonight, but it's only going to take two minutes or a minute to discuss it, unless you have a reason not to.
Nope, absolutely not. Okay.
Ron, you just got a raise. You can stick around for a few more minutes.
It bought you an extra 11.
All right, let's do it.
Okay, even though Palm Beach Gardens doesn't have the homeless problem that a lot of other cities in the county do, I'm requesting that we support the Homeless Coalition's Lewis Luncheon. The Lewis Center opened in 2012 as the first central access to services for the homeless in Palm Beach County, and the city, from time to time, will donate money for charitable causes, whether it's through our employees' group or the city itself, and I'm asking for sponsorship, to consider a sponsorship that would provide one month of rent for a family. It's the lowest level of the sponsorships that are available for the luncheon of $1,800.
I think it's great, you know, the thing that separates Palm Beach Gardens from other cities, and some are like us, but we're not just about our city, but we're countywide. You guys work so hard, Maria, who's not here, works so hard and is everywhere. This is just another example of how the city can not just stay inside of our little bowl, but to get out and do things that benefits the county, so I'm all supportive of it. Any comment? Can I get a motion in a second to approve?
Well, I'll make a motion. Oh, you want?
I did get an email from Maria on this, and she wasn't in favor of funding either one until we could put it in the budget for next year. That was her point.
Well, do you want to postpone until she has a chance to discuss with us, or?
We can do that. The event is not until, I mean, of course, the money goes in early, but it's not until October, so, I mean, we can postpone and wait and see how she feels and about it. Is there, is there, is there the other organization within the city that does charitable donations? The employee, is it worth bringing up to that group instead of taking it from the city budget? The employees?
Is there a charitable foundation within the city that can donate the money?
Doing the employees, was that something? I don't know.
You know, that.
I'm confused.
Perhaps we can just table this for the next meeting. I think it's a simple acknowledgement that just because we're Palm Beach Gardens and we have a lot of great things going on here, that we're not part of a bigger county that has bigger issues, that we should also be trying to help.
You could have three votes right there. I mean, I was concerned about.
Maria sent an email to the city manager voicing some concern, and I respect Maria's opinion. Perhaps we just wait until next month.
Unless we, unless we agree in one vote, it's up to you.
What would you like to do? Would you like to vote on it tonight, or would you like to wait until next month?
Let's breathe.
Let's put it on the next.
Let's breathe, we'll put it on the next. That's why I had suggested before, so we're tired, so.
Let's move it to the next month.
Real quick, I'm sorry, just a matter of housekeeping. At the city manager's contract, we had an alternative resolution, or motion that was voted on and approved, but Mr. Lanes, Councilmember Lanes' motion, and Councilmember, or Vice Mayor's Litt's motion, second to approve his contract, was never voted on. So, if you could call the question on that, because you approved the contract with, you approved a 6% raise, but you didn't approve the contract. So, I just need a, I just need a vote in the affirmative to approve the contract. Do you already have a motion?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve the city manager's contract.
Aye.
All in favor? All in favor? Aye.
Thank you, just housekeeping.
Four zero. Do we want to table this mayor's breakfast? That's a $500 contribution. Does Maria have any comment on that?
Why don't we table it all?
Why don't we just table that?
Yeah, you could have voted with that.
Unless, okay.
$500, just so you know, came from Mayor Commerford from Jupiter Inn at Colony. He was, we were asked by the chamber to support a table. Last year, Jupiter Inn at Colony paid the whole thing, which I thought was a little bit strange because it was the smallest municipality, so this was asking, asking the 10 municipalities